All right, welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. And seeing none, we'll move on to amendments to the agenda.
So, should have been on here, continuation of monitoring report 2.2, under item 12, should be another bullet of 2.2 and 2.5, financial planning and budgeting. And we may note that those were going to be on last meeting.
Okay.
And I would like to, we can take off city-school collaboration and add the SBA policy governance work.
In that spot?
Yeah.
Anything else? All right. With those amendments, we will move on to announcements.
So, the SBA annual course, winter concert is on Sunday, December 7th, at 2:00 p.m. in the auditorium, and they will be performing very nice seasonal music and some exciting new arrangements, as well as this sing-along, Hallelujah Chorus, so you're all welcome to come and sing.
Great, thanks.
Friday, December 5th, SBHS will be hosting the largest academic tournament in New England. The event will attract no less than 65 teams from 24 schools and four states. If you have not signed up to volunteer, there's still time. Contact Eric Stone and let him know if you want to read or keep score, something like that. The neighborhood learning conversations on the SBHS advisory systems, students, staff, and families are welcome. Monday, December 8th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at SBHS cafeteria 2. Please join the Rowland fellow and SBHS educator, John Painter, for a training and an actual neighborhood learning conversation on the high school's advisory team, the strengths of the current system and the compelling possible visions for the future. All voices are welcomed and valued, so please bring your ideas and your collaborative spirit as we listen and learn from one another, and refreshments will be served. FHTMS, in conjunction with First Light Theater Project, will be performing Mary Zimmerman's 2009 Tony Award-winning The Arabian Nights on Friday, January 9th, and Saturday, January 10th, at 7:00 p.m. in SBHS auditorium. Tickets are $8, $6 for seniors and children under 16, and will be available at FHTMS or at the door on the night of the show. For more information, visit that website, that's right down there, or contact Mr. Bailey.
I would just like to add, the academic tournament, Doug and I have read for years. It's a lot of fun, and they give readers the answers, which is a good thing, because some of the questions are pretty tough. It's a fun thing to do.
Yeah, and also another thing, Arabian Nights is going to be an awesome show. I've been working with the kids for three to four months now, since I'm choreographing some of the dances, so you guys should all come.
That's great.
Anyway, back to announcements. So, obviously, students are getting back from break, getting back into the school. There's only three weeks, but, you know. And you guys have probably already seen, the play was before break, which was a lot of fun. Everyone seemed to enjoy it, enjoy it, so that's one thing. Hockey season starts, which SB is really big into, and most of the winter sports as well. Another thing before break was the sock drive from Key Club, which was a big success. I'm not sure how many socks we got, but there were buckets, like my slam had one huge bucket just themselves. And also, before break, we, DECA, a group at our school, did a lot of community outreach and community service, and we're bringing that out even more. We're not just a business-like club, but we're helping the community as well, so.
Yeah, I know that Luke and Hall Poppen brought all the socks down to Cots today, right?
Yeah. It's awesome.
Now, I have just one other one, that if you drove in this morning and you saw a big tractor trailer truck in front of the middle school, there's a good reason, it was the middle school elevator arrived. So, the internal workings of the new elevator have arrived, and actually, they started working on that today, in parts, in pieces. So, that's exciting, although it was a little bit of a disruption early this morning, when they said, "We can't get in there, and we'll make sure the tractor trailer moves over to the right." Yes, we'll all ride the elevator, and we'll make sure that that will be part of it.
Okay, other announcements?
Well, I have an announcement. I would just like to share with the community that I've made the decision that I will not be seeking reelection for another term in March, and I'm making this announcement now to give prospective candidates who might be interested, time to explore the role fully, to ask questions, and the signature deadline is at the end of January. It's a difficult decision. This role has been very rewarding. Our students and our families, the district, the citizens of South Burlington are very important to me. You know, I think about the kindergartner stepping onto the school bus for the first time, the English-language learner navigating a new culture, the middle school student trying to understand a new social world, the high school student feeling pressure to figure out their next steps, the parents that support them, teachers that coach them and encourage them, administrators who design and create the conditions for all these things to happen, and our community, who have to balance their belief in equality education in the context of their financial realities. So, I'm leaving at the end of my term and not running, because I need to scale back on my volunteer commitments and various roles to balance family, work, and board responsibilities, and I'm hoping to achieve a better work and family and civic engagement balance, and I would love to still be involved in other areas in the district, if the school district will have me. It's been a true privilege to serve this community, and I'd like to thank the citizens of South Burlington for trusting me to make education decisions on their behalf of the school board. And I'd like to thank my fellow board members for their commitment to doing this work, they're intelligent, caring people who set a tone of respect and professionalism. And I admire them for their character and integrity. I told Delina that I might do this. I appreciate David's steady leadership of this district and the opportunity to work with David and his dedicated team, John, Delina, Megan, Karen. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
Well, I know, on behalf of myself and all our colleagues, Diane, you will be sorely missed. You're an incredible asset to this team, and we're not going to let you go too soon. We have a lot of work to be done.
Yes, yes.
But I hope you will allow us to celebrate your service at some point in the future, and you have our very sincere thanks and admiration as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yay.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to agenda item 7, the landfill solar project.
Yeah, so, I think Chad Farrell probably will, I mean, I understood him to be coming probably, but I'm not.
Shall we hold that?
Yep. I think you could. There's a couple of quick things around board questions that maybe I could just allude to a bit, because one of them, there was three questions in the board packet that we responded to, and the first question on the solar net metering, what has been the five-year history on the electricity expenses? And so, that's been provided there, and one of the things I think that you'll know a little bit more about, but the rates in which you see here, obviously, there's been an increase in the per kilowatt hour over the five years, as John outlined for us in the box provided. This has really been, this is a blended rate, which, when you'll, the information that we get from, that's within the analysis, is actually not the blended rate. It's a much, it's the competitive, it's the, I don't know what you call the rate, it's direct from GMP, and it doesn't have all of the blend in it. And so, you may want to ask Chad a little bit more about the so-called blended rate and the different rate and what applies, but that's something that I felt was important to provide to you. And then, the other question around the net metering, no other school except for Middlebury realizing the project annual savings, why would we be any better? And if we talked directly to those folks? So, just wanted to, again, connect a little bit more on that. One of the main reasons for the higher savings, as we looked into, is the fact that, number one, it's on city-owned land, so that mitigates some significant savings. And the other is that the scale of the project, where some of them have been, you know, kilowatt-hours, this is a 2-megawatt, and so, the scalability of the savings increases as this is a much larger size. And I would encourage you to ask a little bit more to Chad, you know, around those assumptions. Obviously, this is about us, it's about our assumptions, it's our agreement, but certainly, when I inquired more, and again, we have a great resource with the Vermont Superintendent's Association and School Board and Norm Etkind, and so, as you've heard before, we've been less favorable in the past, and it's become much more favorable and much more approved by his work. So, anyway, that's been some, those are some updates, in addition to those questions.
Has the split between the city and the district been worked out?
It has. It's in that, I believe, the 60/40, John, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah. And the big reason for that, I also said, wow, it seems like we're the major consumers of electricity, and that's not true. We're a big part of that, but it really is kind of the 60/40. All of our water treatment and sewer treatment, those are large, large entities that are pulling an awful lot of electricity. So, it really is right. I mean, I kind of look at it as municipal spaces and did not necessarily factor that in, but when I looked at it more specifically and was responded, that's where we're at. So, 60/40.
And is that fixed somehow, or is that subject evolution?
I think if we were to significantly change, I mean, right now, this would be the agreement going forward, based on our current use.
So, it stays that way unless both parties agree to change it?
That's right. Yeah, and obviously, all the financial factors are tied in on the 60/40 split.
Forty percent is about three of our meters, they only use three of our schools. This school, middle school, and Rickmarkut Central is the biggest user, so they only read three meters to do these credits.
Just a quick comment, is it possible that Chad might have gone to the middle school?
I'm thinking that, I may be outrun over.
Is there a way to notify him?
I might be able to.
I would be kind of panicking.
David! I don't know. You know what? I had his business card in my desk, I was going to grab it. Maybe, John, if you want, that's fine.
Let me see here.
Yeah. So, yeah, so anyway, that's, those are just a few questions. I know you may have others specific, so maybe we can table that for right now and move on until he gets here.
Did you have something, Julie, or, okay. Why don't we table the rest of this conversation and give him an opportunity to locate us, since we're moving target tonight? And we'll move on then to agenda item 8, which we've modified to the VSB policy governance work?
Mm-hmm. So, one of the, our next meeting, we're scheduled for Harry Frank to be joining us, and this was about our desire to continue to work at policy governance, and he'll be coming specifically to use us, but will be part of the training ground for a larger entity, and it sounds like, you know, he's asked about whether our ATM is live, it's not live, it's taped, whether they want to try to do something. I think they're going to be happy that it's taped, and then it can be rebroadcast. The idea was, is to have these more live, so there'd be some opportunity to call in and reflect while we're going through this. Our focus is on ends metrics, is what we have provided as a want and a need to get better at, and to solicit the work of the VSB and of others around how we're doing and what we could be doing, you know, better at. So, that's-
Do you have the specific guidance he provided?
I thought I did. I thought I thought it. I don't know. Could have left it in my pile somewhere.
We can pull that up if I need to.
Yeah. No, you know what? It's right here, Elizabeth.
Perfect.
So-
So, ends metrics through the policy governance lens, is that what you're saying? I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, just a quick background. If all of you recall, VSB was sponsoring some kind of webinars that they were, typically were happening on Wednesday night, so most of us couldn't participate in that. So, based on feedback that VSB got from boards like ourselves and others, they decided to kind of take the show on the road and have boards identify issues they wanted to focus on and might want feedback or provide input on, and he's going to various districts. I actually tried to sit in on the last one, but it ended up not being broadcast. But the agenda item that we picked out was on ends metrics, and that was largely driven by our continued conversation around identifying ends or metrics that reflect accurate achievement of the ends and progress in that regard. So, it will really be our internal discussion, where we're at, maybe where we still have questions, but we will be either being viewed live or being viewed after the fact by other SUs and districts who are either practicing policy governance or interested in practicing policy governance, and may specifically have an interest in ends metrics as well.
Because I haven't had coffee for the rest of the morning.
So, Harry did send along some guidelines. You know, if you want to go through those.
Yeah, and so, really, obviously, it's mostly about, you know, assuring the time, the evening, and some other questions, but we've identified, he's indicated that we've identified ends metrics, and again, would you like to begin with a brief presentation? Let me know. I think this is a little bit of an opportunity for you, just to give me some directions, and I'll convey back to Harry on how would you like this session to run? Would you like to know what other people are doing? Would you like to know what kind of, you know, would you like that part of it? And then, would you like to engage in a conversation of what we're doing, and then get some back-and-forth? Again, I just, I throw that out there, I don't know specifically what, how we want to run this. And again, we do need to talk about agenda and time management. When we get to that, this agenda, I definitely think we probably need to reserve, you know, if we've got Harry here, we probably need to do not less than 30 minutes, and maybe you want to do 45 minutes in the session.
So, can we, I guess, two things would be great, from my perspective on this issue. One certainly is to hear what others are doing. The second would be, it would be nice if we could actually inform him in advance of the session what we are doing, and kind of get, use that as a jumping-off point for discussion, and for him to offer a critique or to give input on what we might be doing right, or what we might be doing wrong, or what he thinks we can improve. In other words, we can be the case study for this, but this would, of course, require us to get him up to speed in advance. I don't want him to be learning what we do the night of the meeting. And that, you know, maybe that's, in fact, the starting point, and then he can incorporate, you know, here's how others are handling this kind of thing. That's an idea.
Well, you could take, we have a monitoring report that's going to be, you know, that we have on there, we could use that as, that could be one component. You could take one of those, and we already have ready. We're not going to be able to get through 2.5, for instance, completely. You know, you could use that one, you know, one of those as an example.
This is the ends monitoring, is what I was specifically thinking about.
Yeah, this is ends.
Not 2.5.
Yeah. And specifically, I think, I mean, I think we should make, I would agree with you, Martin. I think informing him of our ends and then kind of what we currently do would be helpful. I like the idea of having an outside party critique that, because we really haven't had that kind of input in a while. I know one of the areas that, when we brought that up, one of the areas we were particularly focused on was around personal development, was an area that we were struggling, you know, what are the ends? And we had lots of examples, but it was an area that wasn't as fleshed out as some of the other areas.
Yeah, those are the softer, how are people doing it?
Rather than give the softballs of how do you monitor how we're doing in math, or, I mean, that isn't a softball, but it seems more straightforward to me. How about the tougher ones that we're trying to?
Well, and maybe, I wonder if we shouldn't sort of ask him to provide some input in the context of proficiency-based graduation requirements and individualized learning plans as well.
How that incorporates into our monitoring of the ends?
That'd be most helpful, if he could come up with some concrete examples of metrics that are really used. I mean, I'd be interested in the critique of our methodology and all that, but I think that the one part, place that we have not seen real substance is in metrics that can be tracked, trying to figure out where are we, where are we going? And something to stimulate actions, to get things to where we might like them to be, might prefer them to be.
Now, this is intended to be other boards sort of viewing our working session, so I think, it sounds like we're looking for some input from him in response to what our current baseline is, and that that might serve as a springboard for our further discussion.
Right, it's actually, we're the case study from which the discussion should be launched.
That's really their intention, as Elizabeth said, or Mark said, that's their intention of trying to instead of come to our session and we'll talk about what we're, they're trying to get out and use us as, you know, use school boards as a resource to work, to collaborate and to help. So, I mean, I have this, I'm wondering, maybe, Elizabeth, if a board member might be specified that could join me on the call when we have a conversation.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
All right. So, great.
And I don't, to your comment, David, I mean, I think the idea of taking an actual monitoring report might be relevant, except I don't think it's one that's on the docket that would be the most helpful to this board.
So, kind of what are others doing, what we're doing, and wanting some feedback specific to ends monitoring, looking at some of those, the ends specific to, like, personal development or disposition for lifelong learning, looking at how those, how others are doing, and then PBGRs, PLPs, and how that information is being reported or being connected.
So, if we could, yeah, if we could get him a packet ahead of time, and then maybe we can schedule a call with him, that would be great.
It looks like that's an hour session, so when we look at our 17th agenda, we might need to make some adjustments, I think.
Yeah, we have from 7:10 to 7:30 on that.
That's not long.
So, we're going to have to add some time.
Yeah, I think if we scheduled 45, but tried to keep the active conversation to 30, and just, depending on how much interaction there might be from other boards online.
Well, his email actually says, broadcast the hour, so.
He's expecting an hour?
Yeah, I mean, that's what it says in his email.
Yeah, we can let him know. He's got 45 minutes.
Yeah.
I actually don't know how long the other one lasted, since I couldn't get into it.
He's trying to give a ballpark of, you know, what, yeah, so, it's good. And we are, we're at Orchard in the cafeteria, and, you know, technology, we'll work on trying to be accommodative to technology around broadcasts.
I was just thinking, not that we're not really good, you could think about moving that meeting.
And just so you know, one of the things, in our ATM, and Connor and others, that they're working on a solution for us, that these mics can be actually amplified for us. So, working to try to do that, okay?
Okay. So, any other comments on the VSB session on the 17th?
I just want to pick up on what Julie said. For that session, maybe we should consider moving that one. I know that they're working on the acoustics, but it, even still, you know, for something that's going to be broadcast, maybe a more contained area.
Hasn't been posted yet, yeah. Okay, we can, does that sound reasonable to people? Maybe, you know, and a little bit more, let me put it back into the middle school. John?
I'll have to check, that's a budget hearing night, and that's advertised. I'll have to check.
Whether or not, we've already pushed it out, yeah, good point.
Well, if nothing else, maybe we could configure that cafeteria to make it a little tighter.
Yeah.
Good.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move back to agenda item 7, the landfill solar project.
So, Chad, we were worried that we sent you astray, but maybe not.
Were you standing over there in the dark?
Yeah, it's a good lesson for reading the details on the network.
You're not alone. We've had many.
He was running this way when I got into the back room, yes.
So, Chad, I did share a few things with the board, just a little bit on the blended rate, and I don't know if you have more you could add, but that our factors that we have on our per kilowatt-hour cost, obviously, are our rates, and they're blended with a multitude of other entities within the district, and this is based on a different factor, which actually is more favorable, and I don't know, that was one thing that I brought up. And the other was just about the cost-benefit analysis, and that this is a much larger-scale project on a 2-meg, which would likely render much more of a savings as a result of the size and scale.
That's right.
So, I shared that basically with them, but we haven't really gone any farther than that at this point, around questions and answers, just to bring you up to speed.
Sure.
So, the board does have in front of them a resolution. The city has adopted the resolution, and they did this on Monday night. This resolution is in concert with their resolution, if the board so chooses to accept it.
I just have a question. So, John, you alluded before to the fact that you only read the three schools?
The meters, the credits will be applied to those three schools, our biggest meter use.
Okay, so, not Chamberlain and not Orchard?
No, I mean, we would, the energy savings, we would allocate, so that it wouldn't-
I see. That's what I wanted to know.
But the mechanics are, they look at three meters.
Okay.
Right.
When do we expect to begin to realize some of these credits and savings?
I mean, at this point, I would estimate that in order to get through the design and the permitting process and ultimately get the project constructed, we would be looking at having the facility commissioned, you know, sometime around now, next year, which is why there's a little bit of a push here, because we don't want to be constructing that thing in the winter of 2015, 2016. It's about a 12-month process to get all the way through your design, permitting, procurement, and construction process. So, really, you'd be seeing these benefits in 2016. You might see a little bit of benefit at the end of next year, but-
Calendar 2016?
Calendar 2016, I think is safe to say. Really, the peak production season for solar is May through August, a little bit, pretty good in September, but that's your peak. So, you're not going to see the peak production months until 2016.
And I know, I had questions that I think, David, you answered to some degree, but I guess I'll ask them to you, Chad, as well. And one is, they're, on this list of school solar agreements, there's really very few that are reaching the level that is projected for the South Burlington model. So, my question is, why would we be better than most of the people on this list?
It's purely an issue of scale. Those projects are roughly 150 kilowatts in scale, and this is 2 megawatts, so roughly almost 12 times the size.
So, that's largely the biggest issue.
That's pretty much it, yeah.
And then, did we have an opportunity to talk directly to any of these folks, just on their implementation or anything relative? I know this is an on-school property, so we don't have that same issue, but did anyone talk to?
I did not. I talked with Norm Etkind, and, you know, he was involved in a, you know, a series of these. I'm not sure exactly which ones, but, you know, he spoke favorably, as I already indicated. I did not talk with any of these folks directly.
I spoke with the business manager at Essex. I think, this was seven or eight months ago, and he wasn't real a big fan, because it was using school property, and at that point, he wasn't sold. But I think it's a lot smaller, a smaller project. If we were using school property, I wouldn't be a big fan either, because we just don't have any spare property, so.
I think, if I could, the other thing I would add to that is, all these projects are relatively new. This is a fairly recent development in the energy space, so I think, you know, Essex, that project was just commissioned in September. I just don't think a lot of folks have seen the benefits, because they, maybe they've seen one year worth of production. You know, the city actually has a couple of projects that they have been operating under a similar type of agreement for a couple of years, but that's really about it at this point.
The reason to ask question.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, just to further elaborate on that, I would say that this is a very common project in Vermont, where, you know, we're pretty progressive and forward-thinking here, but states like Massachusetts, California, they've been doing these kinds of projects for a number of years now, and I think most municipalities in Massachusetts- And I think most municipalities in Massachusetts, for example, have entered into this type of an arrangement.
Other questions? Okay, we have a resolution in front of us that would authorize the superintendent of the school district to execute an agreement with Solar City Corporation and the City of South Burlington to develop a net metering solar array on the city landfill and purchase net metering credits once the agreement has been negotiated. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
So, second?
Any more discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Nine, master planning and financial stewardship.
So, master planning, I have, the city did, did also accept the cost sharing from our pending requests in the past, they've been busy, but I just wanted to allude to you, there's a few things that I owe you still, and that is, although some of you may be aware, but the Task Force Committee folks have met twice, their next meeting is on the eleventh. The individuals here that are involved, obviously Frank Locker, the education planning, and then you can see some of the other folks that are named in here, so it's a, it's a split between, or not necessarily an equal split, but a split of shares between the city and the school district. I know that I owe you and would like to update you based on who the folks are on the Task Force. I'd like to invite you to a Task Force meeting to at least be introduced and I'd like to have Kevin do the same for the council. Obviously, we've had a couple of you who have, were instrumental in kind of kicking off the Task Force, it was Martin and Dan, and so, just to keep you up to speed around where they are and where they're going. The community, the first community meeting has been set at the date that I'm not retrieving at the moment, I'll make sure you're...
I'll be all prepared.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, I will make sure that you're aware of that date and we're in the process of then getting out communication through various media to make sure people are invited and informed. So, I, you know, there's been a lot of work, all of the data that's gone in, the enrollment projections, the city development piece has gone in, the planners have weighed in, so a lot of the data now is currently in the process of being crunched in and come up with options. I was on the phone today with Frank Locker and Kevin Dorn for an hour and fifteen minutes and, you know, it just, it is quite a, quite a lot of information to just get through as far as making sure all of that information's available for the option consideration. So, I will send you a little bit of an update, we're, again, these are public meetings, we are warning those meetings, and then they are keeping track and keeping notes, so I have an obligation, just, I want to keep you updated, I'll, I may ask that, that you come to one if you can, and those of you who can, I'll introduce you to the process, you can listen in a little bit and, and, you know, again, just be better informed, so. I don't know if there's any specific questions with regard to where we are with that. Again, the, the other paper did a nice job in providing a little bit of an overview of the city's school master planning and visioning, Task Force work, so, I don't know if there's any questions specific.
Do we need to vote on this budget?
Yeah, I would like an action. Again, we did have some money allocated, but remember the scope of the, of the work changed considerably, John's work to identify where the money is coming out of, and you can see that articulated there.
Yeah, it is more than $25,000.
Yeah, so.
It's important that there's an action.
Given that, there are a couple of things here that have popped up as pop-ups, I guess, the extra expenses here and the action that's being considered at Orchard School for remediating the drainage and so on, both of these, I think are surprises to the budget, at least to my knowledge. Is it, do we know how we're gonna handle that?
Again, John's outlined for you in this part, and when we get to the specifics on the Orchard mediation, you'll see that one as well, so, obviously, these are, the Orchard is totally unbudgeted, we do have money, some money in contingency, but we've, obviously, that's, we've got a fair number of projects that have gone on that have gone over. You're gonna see that the 130 that was initially forecasted on the mediation of Orchard is a little bit less than that, but nonetheless, you know, it is, it's, it is what it is.
So, I mean, we get, it's definitely a different funding source there, and it's, so, this, there is money here and there's a different funding source, and we want to look at it now?
Do you want to look at it, it's in your, it's in your packet, but...
Well, can you, you know, maybe, John, for, you know, just for those folks that might be viewing this, can you walk through, you know, where you and David are proposing to find the $60,000 to fund the various five elements of the master planning and visioning project here?
Sure, we, in consultants in the facility budget, that, that's a number that's there and not allocated that we have for architects, engineers, and, and planning folks.
And that really fits, that's consistent with the Locker engagement?
Yes, yes. The consultants in the super's office and the professional services in the business offices are both not called out for anything special, but stuff, but projects like this do come up and, and any contingency in the facilities, we had $110,000 to start and that really, if we're looking long-term planning, is mostly about facilities and where our kids are gonna be, so, it, it fits. It, you know, if we have two or three Orchards, we're, we'll be in trouble, but there, there is money there now, so it's not been allocated.
So the facilities contingency, we're utilizing about a third of that?
Uh, yes.
From last year's approved budget to fund the master planning?
That's right.
Project?
Right. Professional services, we had actually budgeted a little more for auditing and it was extended at the same rate, so we, that's where most of that came.
Does use of that contingency put us at risk with anything roofs, boilers, kind of the usual suspects?
Well, there's, yes, but, well, sure, I mean, there, there are things that are gonna come up this winter that we didn't plan on, but I have to say, the last three years, with our current director communicates with me daily and we've, we've had some, one of the reasons we have fund bounce is because he hasn't used it all. You know, they're pretty strict about it, so, once again, budgets have been trimmed, so, we could have an emergency, sure.
Is, is, so this, this wasn't earmarked within the contingency for anything specific at the time?
No, no.
And is, is the facilities person aware that the recommendation is to utilize it for this project?
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Does this leave balance in the contingency after this?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's around $40,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we also have insurance too, for obviously things that would come up where, you know, we, you know, major property issues, we do have insurance on, so, that's important, you know, we, we put a good chunk of money into our insurance providers, so that, that is obviously, in part, I know not fluid contingency, but it is, it's available.
And just a, just an offhand question, but is, were there any grant, is there any grant funding available that looks at consolidation?
Not, not at this time, I mean, there are, there have been in the past with, you know, the RED studies, and, you know, we, if we end up going that way, where there may be, that we could apply for some of that, but we're in the, in the planning phase and it didn't seem to be the right fit for us. Again, most of this is the rural Vermont, you know, consolidation efforts that have been utilized and, you know, they're encouraging that, that use and going to encourage it more, I think, as, as time goes on, so, there may be others, I'm not aware of that, Elizabeth, maybe other grant options I'm not aware of.
And then, just if we go back to the, I know one of the drivers of the timing of this was the TIF district eligibility, I don't know if that's the right word, but are we still, is this timeframe that's been laid out within the schedule that would allow the city to take advantage of that?
Yes. I mean, I, you know, our, our goal here, again, with the Task Force is that it won't, you know, their work won't go beyond May. It could go sooner based on feedback, community feedback, boards, city council, action, et cetera, but we've kind of given them an earmark of not later than February, and that is in, in the context of the timelines that the city has going on around.
Are these joint contracts between the district and the city, or is one the master contractor?
So it's, most of this is under the education and planning and visioning person, Frank Locker, who then has the other folks under contract, so we have an agreement with Frank Locker, he then...
So is we the district or is we the city?
We, the district and the city.
So it's a joint contract?
Joint, yeah.
It would be helpful, I don't, I think we've seen this a little bit in piecemeal and I don't know if the rest of my colleagues feel this way, but I, I would find it very helpful to get kind of a calendar, an updated calendar, the schedules, participants on the Task Forces, we haven't seen that yet, kind of what, what's been defined as the scope and if there are any meeting minutes to date, just so we have a working packet to go from, because I, I don't know about anybody else, but I think I, most of my information's coming in pieces right now, so I haven't seen it all together.
Two of the board members, and I know Dan, Martin, I don't want to put you on the spot, I know Dan was part of the selection, we worked hard at the selection, so there was a time, I don't want to say that the board was totally excluded, but we worked to identify a broad base of both city and school individuals and where they represented from the city perspective, so, that was how we started of the naming of the Task Force and then went to actually naming kind of the charge of the Task Force, which I know Martin and Dan were actually instrumental in, in starting that, so, I definitely left you out after that, so that's, that's where I need to kind of bring it all back up to speed.
Yeah, we need to get caught up, we need to figure out where we need to engage.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we can talk about maybe when to put this back on for just, maybe it's just a report.
Yeah, I, I think, I'll put it in my report next time, just, I think it's important, you know, important that you get it. Again, an action would be helpful so that I can move forward with, with the city and us together.
Okay, so do we have a motion to redeploy funds to support the master visioning and planning budget that's identified as being funded by the school portion of $60,892 as recommended by the administration?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second?
Any further discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes.
Great, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Ten, superintendent's report.
So kneecap science results, I can let Stuart talk to you a little bit about where we're at and answer any questions that you might have, I don't know that the board has had a chance to see the results, but questions and...
To a specific question of Diane's, which was...
The three percent.
Especially free and reduced lunch at three percent, so I went back and looked at the data and, you know, it was very interesting because we were 16, 19, 18, 41 percent, and then three percent. Those are what the data was for free and reduced lunch over, so we have two anomalies, really, one of very great success and one of not great success, so, it's really hard to know because we haven't changed the program, what those two blips really mean programmatically. So, we've done basically two things. First of all, back when our results were 16, 19, 18 percent, science teachers and other teachers started looking at issues of poverty because we already saw that, so there have been work and, you know, we all said, oh, 41 percent, it must be working, but obviously, you know, again, it's only eighth graders and so it's hard to, to know cohort by cohort as opposed to test that third through eighth graders take every year. That being said, the improvement team at the middle school is really looking at, you know, what does that mean, three percent last year, but more importantly, the ninth grade science teachers have been informed through Phil Cirks, the CAS for Science. We had a discussion about this, he actually said that he felt that this class was one of the best-prepared overall ninth grade classes that they had had in science, so he was very surprised when I pointed the data out to them, because remember, overall, it was 39 percent versus 60 percent the year before. So, those are, you know, what I can tell you, we're always looking and seeing, and of course, we're changing the entire science program as we speak, you know, there are new science standards, the next gen science standards, which changes the scope and sequence of what we're doing. We have a number of projects going on individually and we're looking at running a science institute this summer for the district K-12, that would look at universal design as we're building the units, which is to try to create units that are good for everybody, and I'm happy to talk at some further point about universal design for learning and, and bringing in science people from the state to help us with the content. So, that's my update on the report.
So the data, the data, I mean, one of the things was, was it wrong, right? And to date, we, we don't believe it's wrong.
No, no, I mean, we have no way of, we have no way of indicating, you know, from the state report, you know, whether somebody made a mistake somewhere or not, but I would, I would take the data on the face value that, you know, the state has the scores, they're run through Scantron machines.
The same data that the state had is what we were reporting.
Yes, I believe that, that's correct.
We didn't make a transcription error here or something, okay.
So, I guess, Stuart, what I wonder is, you know, what can be done now with, specifically with this ninth grade cohort to kind of change the trajectory?
Well, and that's what we're working on all the time and that's my discussions with Phil. I mean, we have, over the last several years, you know, the whole earth science ninth grade curriculum has changed about, I think, close to four years ago now, and since then, we've seen a general rise in a normal way of trends. We won't have the kneecap scores for these ninth graders to know if we were effective, but at least in terms of the work that we're doing, the teachers have been working with ninth grade for a long time, the same teachers, it used to be a little more, you know, every, every kid is part of the earth science continuum, so, I think programmatically, Diane, we're in pretty good shape and we're looking specifically because of what these scores were for these students in a variety of areas, because, again, this is, as a cohort, this particular eighth grade, their writing scores were lower than, you know, the previous three years' writing scores, their math scores were a little bit lower, not as much in the literacy scores, all those things we take into account for, you know, individual cohorts. You know, at my office, we're trying to look at trends, you know, in terms of the overall piece, but the department chairs at the high school look very thoroughly at the actual data of the kids coming in, especially the literacy, the, the kneecap data for literacy and math, because that's where our improvement plans are built on, because that's what we're held accountable for, for adequate yearly progress, so, sometimes the science data may not be looked at as closely, so, that's where we went back and we really looked.
I think your point, Diane, around, you know, so we, we get the data, it's not just like, you know, we, we receive the data. I, I think it's important to know, there's a, there's a series of things we're trying to do around using the data and backwards analyzing the cohort, and, you know, Stuart can talk more about the data walls that are happening, and some of you may have seen those as you've sat in different places in, in some of the schools, but we have in math and, and, and reading, we, you know, definitely, they have that, we're, we're looking at students over time and we're identifying at the earliest possible, these kids that are here, what are, what are we doing to get them here? As you said, that trajectory, I think, is a really important, you know, concept.
But, but I don't want to make light of it because I really want to be clear that we certainly have done that with reading and math because it's required, and we have maybe not been as thorough around science, you know, in the more general sense, we've looked at it in the big sense, but not like, oh, you know, let's make sure that the ninth grade teachers really see that data. That's why I think what you pointed out was really good, because that's what we should be doing and that's what we are doing. So, I don't want to say like, oh, we have this, I don't want to put a rose in your face on it then, then it's real, but I do think...
You're also saying that anecdotally, you're getting information from the CAS that the class is well-prepared or...
Yeah, seems to be, he was surprised looking at the... Yeah, seems to be, he was surprised looking at the data.
That's right. Not that's particularly-
Ninth grade, no, I'm talking of the ninth grade specific class.
Right, but not this-
Subgroups.
No, no, that's right. We're going to look at the subgroup to make sure that's, that's true as well.
And, and does anyone get a call from the state when an aberration like that shows up?
We have not.
The, the state says the report, but, you know, again, it's going to be very interesting, Elizabeth, because, you know, nobody even is clear whether this is the last or the next to last science kneecap year. We were told it would end in fifteen because that's when the contract ended, but they may have extended for a year. There will be new science, but unlike literacy and math, which are these national tests, I don't know what the next science test is because it's not a national piece. You know, it is in the sense, the next gen science standards, but even though there's the pushback against the Common Core, you know, forty-six states have accepted the Common Core, twelve states have accepted next gen science standards. So Ron is one of twelve states nationwide to move to the new science standards. So that's a very different scale of, you know, what, what will happen. We'll keep you informed.
And do we know, do you know offhand what our current percentage of free and reduced lunch students are district-wide?
I'd know better per school-
We're under twenty.
But yeah, it's about twenty. The high school is about nineteen percent. It's eighteen-something at the, at the middle. It's about, I think, eleven at Central. It's twenty-three or twenty-four at Orchard and about thirty-two, thirty-three percent at Chamberlain. That's, I, I just did a slide on this, so those are rough figures.
General rule for the district would be around twenty.
And that, and that trend is up?
Yes, it's definitely-
About how many points over the last three years?
The-
I'd say like three or four.
Yeah, it's about two or three. I mean, the biggest gains continue to be Chamberlain and Orchard in terms of, but it's, it's a few percentage points gained for Central. But remember, we also have about sixty students for Central who are there from school choice, many from the Chamberlain neighborhood. And the middle school and high school has been a little more stable. But the other piece is Rhonda, you know, has worked very hard also to make sure that students who are eligible for free reduced lunch, and there isn't really, even though they still call it free reduced lunch in Vermont, there is no reduced lunch, it's all free lunch. But the term still is. But she's worked very hard to make sure that students who would be eligible fill out the forms, their parents and guardians, so that students get what, and that was always as aggressive, as aggressively so.
Other questions?
So moving on to budget, Stuart, do you mind shutting at least two of those doors maybe? And, and one of the others, sorry. I love, I love student noise, it's just a little distracting. Thanks. So-
I just don't want the airflow to-
Oh, I know. We're, we're used to it. So we're on to budget and by statute, you know, we've received now some additional information. So what I want to do is we'll open up that conversation and it would be great for, for me to get some budget kind of direction, but more importantly, before we go much further, it would be, it's important that we provide you with what we have. So I'm going to ask John to hand out some information. A couple of things while he's doing that is important to me to, I'm going to hand out some other work that we've done. And again, this is always work in progress, but this is some of the work around our multi-year plan that I've talked to you about before. I don't expect you to read this all right now, but this is just, will give you a little bit of an idea where we are. So on, on one side, one of the things that I think is important around the direction of the district is that, as Stuart just outlined, we've got a fair amount of things that are going on. This is the long form that I'm talking about and just general concept. And you see that it goes out to two thousand and twenty. And so a lot of this is the implementation of strategies and practices that pull in things like PBGRs and PLPs and what do we got to do by each school. We have this much more detailed for each school. So while I, why I bring this up in the budget is because in order for me to move to the next year or be prepared for the following year, I definitely need to be able to have the resources and the budget and the programs to respond to that. So I'm trying to be very, very prescribed around how to move the district forward. That's the plan. In addition to that, you also know that we have the stewardship plan, which a lot of you have seen over time around maintaining of our facilities and those infrastructure costs. So those kind of run in, in harmony. And the way in which we've been meeting with the administrators is we've all agreed that this is our, our work. Each administrator has a plan specific to what they're doing to get, to get, to meet this, okay? And then, as I said, underneath that are the facility-related issues that they need to make sure that their facilities are available and, and ready for learning. So I, I want you to just, that's, that's an essential work-
Just to clarify, these read like they're ads, things new.
They what?
Like they are reading as if they are new things.
No.
Built on some base. Is that-
So you'll see some things that have happened over the course of the year, you know, obviously you see thirteen, fourteen, and so we, we've put some things in play. Certainly as you go out, there are things that we have not yet, we're not, we've not yet done, but it's important for me to be clear with you, in order to continue to move, I may need, I need support to do that.
Can you give us a little acronym?
Yeah.
What's the MTSS?
Yeah, multi-tiered systems of support. And there's a, a whole, you know, set of rubrics and, and components that go along with that. We believe that it's, it was a, it's an excellent system for us to use and it's allowed us to do a lot of this, this deeper thinking and deeper planning for the district. We recognize that, we need to be clear on that acronym. So we, we've taken the task and again, as I said, it goes specific to each school. And as we've been meeting with our administrators around the budget process, this has become more populated also as, as theirs have as well. So again, I'm, I'm happy to talk more about that. This is a driving force for me so that it's not like going to be budget-like, pick this out of the air. It's driving the district towards meeting our ends, which we believe this is, is in part doing that, along with facility and maintaining, et cetera. So that said, that's one, that's, that's a, that's a, that's our work, but then how are we going to, how are we going to fund that work is, is the other piece. So unfolding tonight is the other half of where we are at. And so John, would you like to just walk them through this information and what we've most recently found?
Sure. And I have another handout, but I'm not going to give it to you until we get through this.
Hold it, right, hold it.
Our, our schedule said this was discussion of important budget issues and a review of the state tax commissioners recommended on, of recommendation of state tax rates and the level of spending. So I have that on the other handout. But David and I, and we've been talking about key issues that really we have to address in the budget or, I know the board's been addressing them through the, the paper, the white paper. So, but some of these things have real monetary impact in the current year and, and so on the front page of this handout of two thousand and sixteen budget considerations is just a list of the, the ones that are, came to the forefront. I mean, there's plenty of things, you could talk about gas rates and all that kind of thing, but these are things we can't forget or at least know where we stand. And some, some of the news is good and some of it's not. And I'll just, I'll go through a few and I know that you haven't had a chance to look at it. So I, I consider this number one at the top. This is my personal concern about the funding level of the state teacher retirement system. It, it, it's not getting any better and I think it should be a concern for teachers and taxpayers alike, you know, the school board. It's, it's one point seven eight billion dollars, the unfunded liability. And I know that that doesn't all come due tomorrow, but from the perspective of budgeting, we know that it's shifting, the shift started last year and it's a small amount in our budget this year, but it's double what, what the cost is in fifteen, eleven thousand dollars. And we're going to fine tune that, but I just think, I think it should be out there. Pre-kindergarten expansion statewide, we've been planning on an additional hundred fifty thousand dollars for that. And first of all, our enrollment is up quite a bit. Twenty-four kids, FTE kids, equivalent of ten hours per week. But also the state subsidy was going to be set at three thousand dollars versus twenty-six hundred. And my, I guess, caveat or, I, I'm not sure how, right before Thanksgiving, the day before Thanksgiving, we got a memo from Secretary Holcomb and Chen, which allows the district to delay implementation of Act one sixty-six. Now we're, we have a program that's going, so I don't know how that affects us.
So is that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to growing kids South Burlington?
Well, it's addition, it's an addition of, of the subsidy that we would pay now, we pay around half a million dollars now.
Right.
So growing kids, that contract would be the same or similar. It's not, it's not that.
And remember for every, so just on that preschool quick, for every student that has more than ten hours, we get a, we get a fraction of ADM, which is a revenue, which is revenue, which we then work to push back out to those providers, which, which are important. But there's a significant amount of revenue that comes in for this. And what John's speaking to is under one sixty-six. It requires us to pay not just what we're doing at twenty-six hundred per student, but goes to three thousand, and it's that difference of twenty-six to three thousand that equates to the hundred and fifty thousand dollar of increase.
Is the ADM the same from the twenty-six hundred to the three thousand? Because isn't it like-
The additional students we have will increase our ADM. And the ADM does cover all this cost. It does.
Isn't that just increased time per student? No? Okay, I'm not understanding that right.
Well, you said it's above ten hours. So that's more time gives you, funds more ADM.
You get, you get for ten hours or more. You don't get more for more hours.
I got it.
It's ten hours or more. Has to be a minimum and you have to have qualifications of stars, which are accreditations of three, actually four or more stars, you know, which is an accreditation terminology. So again, it's, it's, it's important. I mean, we're, we're not negating that it's not important. It's, it's again, added requirements, add new rules. And so one sixty-six, if, if implemented for next year was going to be under our guesstimation, a hundred and fifty thousand more dollars.
So what, are we saying that now has been delayed by a year?
It's been delayed. We can, if we so choose, to implement it if we want. And, and part of that is, I'm in conversation with John and others around, you know, is there a benefit to us going in? You know, what, what is the benefit? What does, does it welcome in more people? You know, there's all kinds of questions around there, but we, we have the ability to delay that based on the, the letter that, that John referenced.
So the commitment from the district will go up to three thousand dollars, but the ADM amount stays the same that you get above for ten hours and above?
Yes, and that's the key thing. I don't fully understand if there's a set amount of money that's distributed among the district, districts and more kids, less money per ADM. That's the thing I don't know.
So, I mean, under our current practice, it's twenty-six hundred. You know, we, if we stay with what we've done before, do we, are we still required to do this? Are we going to be required to do three thousand?
I know, that's the key.
Or are we going to get pushed in that way? So we're, but these are drivers and I don't want to talk necessarily overwhelmingly about everyone, but that was an important piece of information that's come to us.
But it's mostly, I mean, at least for local, it's mostly a wash as far as, I mean, we're going to get as much revenue as we're going to put out.
Yes.
But what it also means is there's upward pressure on the state tax rate.
That's right.
The home state, home state base rate.
More than there has been.
Right, okay. Plus it's a, that's two-thirds of a, you know, when you say, okay, we've helped spending equal, you know, if we're going to hold our budgets equal, but now it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's, well, that's not holding it equal. Well, there's revenue offset it, but still our budget's up. So it's, it's, it's that perspective too.
But this, this particular one though, they, well, not to get into it, but it has been delayed for a year.
Yes.
That has already come out.
Yes.
So we have a choice there.
Yes.
Okay.
Speaking of choice, school choice, I just brought this back up. So to show what was and what we are now, so. And this will be the last time we, in two thousand and sixteen, there won't be any money out, but there'll be some money in and that's the end of it, the way things are.
A hundred and twenty-five thousand less approximately. Actually a little more than that, a hundred and thirty-five thousand less.
Well, that's-
Than the previous year.
Yes.
Less revenue.
Yes. On the next page, our equalized pupils. And I, I usually am pretty conservative on this and I have to tell you, at four o'clock, this did not say the same thing at four thirty.
Love it.
I got an email from the state saying our preliminary number was up by fifteen kids. And, and part of that's what's, I, I think part of what Stuart just alluded to, there's, there's credit for free and reduced lunch. There's, you know, maybe our mix of kids has changed, our, you know, our enrollment's down a little bit, but equalized pupils. And it's a preliminary number at this point, but it's, it's not a, it's not a negative number, so. Title II funds, Stuart has brought this to my attention, that whatever the amount of Title II funds we get, we have to share with other, other schools in, in South Burlington. So our budget will balance because we won't spend any more than we get, but, and we have to administer it for other schools, right?
We do. That's right, the grant, we don't write them a check. We have to put them in our grant. In the past, we, just very quickly, in the past, the way it was interpreted for independent schools was that you basically said, here's what we're doing for professional development. Do you have any particular needs? Let us know. But now we have to basically put their enrollment, which includes Rice of four hundred students in the Long Common School, Schoolhouse into our numbers divided by, and basically that's close to twenty thousand dollars that Rice could possibly utilize for professional development if they write, you know, work with us to do that. So that's twenty thousand dollars less plus close twenty-six thousand for other things we do with that grant money here that we would really not be doing if it's the same amount of money here. And the only save out of the same.
Next is state special education reimbursements. We do time studies on, on staff, teachers and peer professionals who are involved in special education and sometimes they do work that's not reimbursable. And at the end of the year, there's a typically a write-off of that. An example would be at one of our schools, there was a number of kids, eighty kids out there with one, one person supervising one day. And the principal said, can we send a pair out? And I said, yes, but you'll have to, you can't charge the state for that because it's not dealing directly with a, a kid who had the need. So that's just a note basically for budgeting that we have to take that into account so we don't overestimate our reimbursement. And when we had to review last year of IDA funds, though, the documentation required for federal funds is just, it's not mind-numbing, but it's, it's, it's significant. So we, we're more cognizant of making sure we do that. Students from districts without high schools, we've had a great big jump in Georgia schools and yes, it's a very significant amount of money we get from Georgia. And so that'll be factored into our revenue this year. We, we're going to, that'll continue. So that's a good thing.
That's also factored into the master planning and visioning piece too, as a important note around future enrollment and risk.
Health premium increases, I think the board particularly, but in two thousand and fourteen, we had a ten percent increase and in the current year, we had a four and a half percent increase. The rate is not finalized, but it's, it's supposed to be in the neighborhood of four and a half percent again for planning this year.
Yeah, the, the board will be voting on that Monday at eleven AM.
Oh, okay.
We should find out.
All right. Well, new information first to know. We've listed a budget vote history just to keep it in front of us and, you know, in two thousand and nine, everyone said the budget was not going to pass and it passed by four votes, so I, I, I- votes, so, I, 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 I'm looking at that and say, well, it passed by four votes, so. The support staff pension plan, the actuary report is, is in draft form, and there's two, two good things about this, one is the fact that our minimum contribution has gone down by forty-five thousand dollars, from six hundred and thirty thousand until down to five eighty-five, which is pretty significant, and the plan hit the eighty percent funded mark, so, I'm really happy about that, and I know the equity markets are just driving a lot of that, but our, all our funds aren't in equities, and I, I think it's, it goes up and down, but I'm, I'm thankful we are where we are, so, that report will be here by the fifteenth.
Is there any?
Or the tenth, I mean.
Well, this is a, it's a side question, you might not be able to answer it.
Yeah.
Is there any strategy, when, you know, when you're looking at a pension plan like this, that as, as you start to approach more fully funding it, that you can start to put some in more stable earnings vehicles?
Yeah, there would be, yeah, yes. The, the investment managers, SEI, have, they wanna come in January, and I know we've changed the meeting around from the twenty-first, I think I'll have them come in February, and we'll, we'll talk about that, yeah.
Would that be something you want us to ask, I mean, in, in preparation for them coming, you know, it's the volatility, or?
Well, it's really how do you manage the volatility when, as, as we are getting a little bit healthier in that area, and we know it's exposure.
Right. When the, the support staff, we were negotiating, Martin and Diane and David, they asked for this history or summary of what contract settlement details had been, and I think it's valuable for, to keep in mind what that has been, so, each group negotiates separately, or in the case of non-union, they don't negotiate, but it's, it's here for just our use and, and the public. We've been, we've been talking about support for miscellaneous programs, and David, forgive me for using that term, but mentoring alumni and development and wellness need to be better coordinated, I don't know what else to say about that, but.
You've heard, you've heard me talk about that and put that out, and administrators have heard it, and I, I, I'm in the process of putting a plan together around what that's gonna look like, that will be shared with you, and it's not, again, these programs play an important part, and there's my, my desire for some additional leadership, direction, focus, you know, on this.
Yeah. Staff resources in the business office, we, in the audit management letter, it was referred to that the business office is, is thin in some areas for, for doing some of the accounting, the student activities, fundraising, schools out, were three of the areas that we, we were looked at, and I'll just talk about schools out, it has grown from just a, kind of a minor program to over, almost a million dollars of revenue a year, and the director still is highly involved in the collection of money, funds, and you think about that, we don't ask the principal of Chamberlain to deal with collection of money and funds, you know, it becomes different sources, but it's, I think, I think it's expedient that we do that differently, and same with nutritional services, we've put more resources in there, but there's just a lot of work to be done, some of our, our student activities at the middle school, they raise a lot of money, and it's all done manually, and the board doesn't see the output, so there's things that have to be rectified, and, so, this is something we're gonna deal with and have a proposal, I'm not quite sure what it is yet, but, and some of our, I'm starting to call it Central Office North and Central Office South, that's me and no one else's body yet, but, I think, I think we need to think that way, some of our, our payroll benefits person is actually doing some more benefit work that has been done over in the superintendent's office, our business office coordinator does a lot of phone work, crisis teamwork, that's not very financial, so, this is, this has not been discussed with many people, but I'm, I'm thinking about it, and I know that budget time's here, and it's, it's short, so. Facility stewardship, in the two-point-five, at the very last pick, very last exhibit, there's the, the plan, and we worked on that this summer with the, with the city, the, the one thing that we need to talk about, I think at length during the budget deliberations, is our elevator project in this building. The, the project, well, the estimate is more than we have from, from the bond issue, and there's an issue of access right.
Right there.
There, that we have a plan from the architect to put a ramp, and I have a picture of this, but, a ramp here, so that someone in a wheelchair can get from this level to the level where the main lobby is, without getting into an elevator, using it as an alternative source, and it would require some remodeling of the big picture room, and some remediation of, of substances, that kind of thing, so it's, it's, it's a bigger project, we have the estimates, and, and I'm working now with David in talking about how we can maybe reposition some of our things, some of the projects for the bond particularly, so, that'll be coming, I have, I have plans and that kind of thing, but I don't know that tonight's the best night, but I want to alert you to that. We've worked pretty hard with Patrick and special education and to look at the plans and make sure that we're on the right track for access. Another thing that's come up is the equity of dressing rooms and facilities, locker rooms for, you know, in, in, in the gym, and we're gonna be taking away the, the space in the gym where the, the, the machines are, the exercise machines, the rowing and treadmills, et cetera, and have to redo that, so, and then there's a room upstairs that could be used as a, a girl's team room for their sports, so, I don't have estimates on those, but we're working hard to get those. So, it's complicated, moving an elevator that's right in the middle of the school is, is, I think that, looking back, I'm hopefully, hopefully looking back, the middle school been a lot, a lot easier, but we're getting to a place where timing's gonna be an issue in the next three to four weeks, so, keep you posted and let you know about that. And then finally, dual enrollment, there's, there will be costs involved with that here, and David and Patrick and I went to University of Vermont on Tuesday and talked a little bit about how that might work, but I don't know if you wanna talk about that now, or?
I think it's good for them to know.
It's an expense that we need to put in this budget, that's why, that's why it's here.
It's been identified with us in the past with the legislative body, and it will continue to be, the currently, the, the way in which it's funding is, is, is not in the best interest of moving this forward. Right now, we met with UVM, if, if our students take a class at UVM, ninety percent of the, of the, of a CCV rate is covered per credit, ninety percent, and we, we pick up the rest, okay, and we pick up the other, the other portion. If we teach the class onsite with our people who are credited through the university, the university is paid, cause they have oversight, they have transcripting, they have whatever, they pick up by law twenty percent of a credit of CCV rate, and to them, that just does not work, that, that's just financially, does not even support a break even, and so, we're left with, it probably won't continue to be something, it will not be something that's viable here on our site, it will only be viable, you know, at all for them to go there, and what that means is that kids will, kids really don't have the, the opportunity to go there. Even, even though we will provide transportation, it's not of great interest developmentally for kids who have a desire, and I'm talking larger scale, it's just not, and, and we know that, we have history of, of that type of activity, it's not as, right now, we have sixty kids that are involved in those, what we hope, the bridge program, and right now, UVM's saying, hey, that just, that, those, that money breakdown just doesn't work for us, we, and, and it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a cost issue.
But apart from the bridge program, David, the dual enrollment has existed before, you know, before we started doing the bridge thing this year, so, what, what was our liability or exposure for that, because there are kids that have gone and accessed.
Very, 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 very few, very, very few, and that's really the issue, it becomes an equity issue, our kids that don't have a means to get there, it's, it's out of their, their comfort zone, it's not with their peers, it, there's, where we say we offer it, it's not highly, it's not highly used, it's really not developmentally right, you know, and, and certainly at the cost, UVM even at that, and I'm using UVM as an example, they say that's, you know, it's at the CCV rate, it's not really, it's not really a desirable program in which they want to continue. Certainly on our side, the twenty percent of a CCV rate is significant, doesn't, doesn't cover their cost, so, again, should've been more diligent conversation perhaps around dual enrollment, how to make that work, again, we, we weren't necessarily, you know, at the table when, when that was constructed, so, I'm disappointed.
But we can't change the, the law that suggests that.
Not right now we can't, not right now, but we obviously have in, in the process moving forward.
We're certainly asking for, talking about sustainable funding for mandates.
That's right.
So, so, does that mean you're not gonna have any college courses or credit courses taught here, like the statistics and calculus?
We have sixty kids that are currently enrolled in those two programs, fifty-nine actually, they're currently AP programs, because we, we didn't have the full go-ahead for the, our bridge program, we're still waiting to hear from UVM around whether or not they'll make this work or not. Again, initially, you know, at least the, the walkaway was a disappointment, that it just didn't work for them on a cost benefit analysis, so, it would still remain a AP program, kids would take the, and that would, that would be it.
But, so, let me just clarify, so, but, as, at least right now, any, any kid who wants to access dual enrollment can still do so, and we have to pay for it.
Again, there's a, there's a process by which they, they go through to do that.
I understand the process.
And again, we have very, very few, again, Patrick joined me, and I also had John with me, with their, with their folks, and, you know, that's, it's, it's just not, it's not being widely used now, and certainly, the marketing part of it is not being brought either, there are, there are kids that are taking advantage of it, but very, very few when you look at, you know, the percentage.
And is that the case for other districts or just us?
Yeah.
So, there's not gonna be significant additional cost for dual enrollment, at this, at this stage?
Yeah, and maybe the more we talk about it, maybe, you know, if we, if we eliminated programs, right, perhaps, there might be a driving force to, to do that, I suppose, I, I don't know what that might look like, this is very similar to what happened with Act one twenty-nine, right, everyone gets the opportunity to go, and look what's happened to enrollment, so you say it's open and available, but what's, what's happened actually is a diminution.
Contracting.
That's right.
Yeah. It would, it would be, I was just gonna say, it would be helpful for our conversation with legislators to sort of document how the program's being utilized now, and what it could be if it were funded more appropriately, what the interest level would be, cause I, I think you're right, that it's, well, it's the experience, it's the very few kids that are taking advantage of the program in its, in its configuration, or would take advantage.
So, will there be a line in the budget for this?
Well, you know, in, in, in the past, it hasn't been a significant expense, so it's been in the high school budget under a miscellaneous line, so.
But in the past, they, the state was paying for the first year, right?
Well, yes, what I'm talking about, over time, we've had some kids go there, like, you know, so, it's been, it's been, we'll have to get a number that has some basis, yes.
But I, I agree with the utilization of past and where we are, and what's kind of some trend data, to point out to legislators that while this sounds great, and we wanna give more universal access, it's actually not.
Here's what's really happening, yeah.
And I think, on, on your behalf, what we, what we came up with and worked with UVM was, was the, the bridge program that you had a little bit of information about, what would allow, allow kids to be here with a qualified teacher, with space at UVM whereby which they made a determination developmentally that they would transition to a place, so kids who've never had, who don't have a lot of direction and college emphasis or career path, sit in those locations and say, I can do this, and it allows for, for us to provide a, you know, the rigor of, of the content, along with an opportunity for all kids to be able to, to do that, so, we're, we're not over, I mean, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're gonna get some information back that will say, hey, we're, we're still interested, but I think it's important to highlight here under this, this particular part.
Did UVM give any guidance as to what the mismatch is in dollars?
Yeah, they did.
If it's not twenty percent, what's it need to be, eighty percent, what's it need to be?
Well.
I mean, are, is their cost structure so violently different from CCV?
Well, it's probably, it's, it's, it's in the range of about two hundred, it's about double what, where they're at, I'd say, right?
Maybe they should learn some things from CCV.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and I'm, I'm, we're not, I'm not in that situation, it's, it's, obviously, you know, utilization should have driven most of the conversation and interest, again, I'm not them.
It sounds to me like they're pushing, pushing back and don't wanna do it, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah, and, and, again, what, what they've said is, they get a very, very small percentage of, of the ed fund to support their public entity themselves, and so, you know, they see shrinking dollars, and they're having to make some decisions, too, around how they, so, it's not all, it's, it was very respectful, they're very interested, they're very engaged in the way, what we're thinking, they, they want to make it work, again, some of their, their higher level leadership there was very interested, you know, in, in, in our thinking and wants to continue to engage, it's just we're at a place where, you know, those finances are getting in the way.
I have a couple of questions, and I should probably know the answer, but the courses that students can take, aren't they, they could take two courses at UVM, how is that, how does that relate to dual enroll, I mean?
That's that, that's what that is.
Okay. And my second question is, can students take, if they wanted to, I know there might be some access issues, but can they take courses in the evening and on weekends, or does it have to be while school's in session, or?
It's, it's open.
Are there rules around that?
No, it, it's fairly, it's fairly open, and most of the classes in which they're interested, you know, that there is, there's during the, during the normal, generally normal school day, I don't know.
I would say my experience with my son trying to access this is that it's really hard to make this, their school day work with our school day.
Yeah, I would imagine.
And it's also really hard to get particular courses that they want, because they're filled by their students, so, it, there's all these obstacles from my point of view, I just, just, you know.
They don't have blue and gray days that fit in there.
Yeah, it's, I mean, and so, actually, an evening class may be great, but, you know, they may not have whatever they wanna take in the evening, and so I do know that there were a few, at least, students of ours this past summer who accessed this and took a summer class, which makes sense, at least to me, in terms of the schedule, and that's probably the, the most easy to access.
So, you, you, just from what Julie said, you can see the likelihood of, we have fifty-nine kids that would likely be higher percentage of engagement in that program, in the bridge program, because it's scheduled, the connection, right?
Yeah.
We, we would've had higher number of kids taking that, I believe, and being, if successfully passing, would have been granted a three credit.
Right, because you create that alignment for them.
Absolutely, and, and UVM, they, they got it, they, they are absolutely, they get it, and it's, it's, again, the finances.
Thanks.
So.
At this point, is there any questions, or?
Probably others you wanna add there. Any glaring things you, missing there? I mean, think about it, you just got it tonight, so.
No, I, I, you know, one comment I'd make, and I, I don't think we're necessarily at a point of talking or agreeing on guidance, but I think the, the work that the board did on Monday in terms of talking about the, the white paper that started out as a resolution, I, I do think it would be helpful to understand with our own bud, within our own budget, just things like what, what is the baseline funding within South Burlington associated with the Brigham decision, if, if we can even carve that out in some way?
Brigham.
The Brigham decision?
Right, what are the essential functions that we're required to do? Right, what are the essential functions that we're required to do and what have been those others, right? Breaking out of the human service kind of piece, yeah.
Um, and then I think we're gonna have to take a hard look at, um, class size as well. I mean, those are the two things that, I don't know if any other board members wanna make comments at this point, but, um, I think based on our past discussions, those would be two areas that I know I would have an interest in seeing us move forward with.
Yeah.
So, when you, when you say class size, are you, um, are you looking at the high school and middle school as much? Cause I know that the last few years, we've looked carefully every year at class sizes in elementary school, and it's just that our hands are somewhat tied of either having a way-too-big class or arguably too-small class. And we've generally chosen the arguably too-small class, not always. You know, we have some cohorts who have fairly big class sizes. And I feel that we're gonna run into the same, you know, issue this year as well. But I don't think we've ever really looked as much at the middle school and high school, uh, as far as class size.
I feel like, I feel like the whole system needs to be evaluated in terms of, of, um, staff to student ratios, just to see... We're, we're fortunate in that we're a large district, so we may not fall into some of the statewide statistics that we've highlighted in the white paper. But I think we need to validate that for ourselves, um, across the whole system.
Yeah, and, and that's getting to probably more detail than, we haven't looked as mu, at much, as much at staff to student ratio as, as we've just looked at class sizes.
Yeah.
And, and perhaps that's what we should look a little closer at this time. Because I think really in the past, we really just have seen class sizes.
And, and I did, I did mean the broader issue when I brought that up, when I said class size, but it is staff to student ratios.
I think, as you said, you, you've kinda got the Brigham decisions, you know, and what we're required in. Then you have those other things that were, are those mandated, things that have not had costs associated. And then you also have, you know, our, our cost per student breakdown, which, you know, we, we've done like the staff to student ratio, the teacher to student ratio more than we have the whole staff. It does get into, I think it's, it's, um, middle and elementary is much more aligned. When you get to the high school, it becomes far more complicated because we, we offer, you know, a, a fairly verbose program of studies that allows kids to take, you know, a lot. And so, you know, that, we definitely know that, you know, that, that will have to, that will have to trim. And part of what we were just talking about dual enrollment, you know, could have, could help us in those categories or, or Act one twenty-nine could help us in those categories too, so that we don't have, you know, the Essex, the Essex teaching the nine kids and the Burlington teaching four, you know, that we, and we're dealing five, you know? So, I mean, we're gonna have to, I, I think in order to do that, you'll see kind of what we've had for trend data on program of study, those that have run. And those are the hard calls because sometimes you've got five kids, six kids, eight kids, nine kids in a class. I'm using that as an example, without even knowing that that exists. I know we have some at the, like, the fifteen mark, ten, eleven, twelve mark. And to disallow them that opportunity in a progression is problematic, you know, if it's a high-level learner. But it may be at a cost that we, we can't afford. And that's, that's kind of what we've already addressed in other avenues. So, I, I hear you around looking at those, um, looking at some of that enrollment trend data.
Other, other board comments?
Yeah, I had one other, uh, issue as far as, uh, to pay attention to, and that is, uh, the supposedly higher expected retirement, uh, number that we have. And I know, I guess I have a couple of questions about that. One question is whether there's any way we can find out earlier while we're putting together the budget this year. I know that there's not an obligation to tell us until a little later, uh, but, I mean, is there, is there a way to encourage, if people are gonna retire, to let us know? Because this is gonna be a particularly hard budget year, and that would be good to be able to put in there. And the, the second is just if not, I mean, can we get a, like, our conservative estimate?
And high estimate.
And then, and then, you know, a higher estimate since we are hearing rumors of more or higher-than-average retirements?
Yeah, there, there's some things that I'm working on right now to try to, you know, to be a little bit, uh, earlier informed. Part of that is, you know, contract issuance. Um, obviously, if I went and issued all contracts now, you'd probably be saying, "Ooh, that's dangerous." But we definitely know there's a good, strong core of people, um, and we, we've, we've never issued them in different ways. So, there's a conversation currently going on around issuing contracts in, in kind of a phased waves. When you receive a contract, you have an obligation to tell us. So, we're thinking that there's some mechanisms here that could help us with some of that. And that doesn't mean that we only give it to certain teachers. It would be kind of our core. And so, we're currently working on that right now. And again, I'll keep you posted on that. But it's, it's part of my hope. We, we typically are always in that after the, after the vote has passed. And we, obviously, if we have folks that are, that are in fact retiring, it's important for us to recruit, um, people who are in the queue, but often by the time we get there, we, much of that pool is gone.
So, there's no limitations contractually when we can issue contracts?
No, uh, again, this is again, part of what we're working on, and, um, there's, there's, there's nothing there. Obviously, we've made it kind of clean by the time you, you get a, a vote, then we say we have, money's appropriated. But there's probably a core here, our core areas of content, and the people that are, are within those would be the, would be the, the issued ones. So, that, that might be a good number that might help us at least get some more fact-based, uh, retirement data. So, anyway, we're, we're, we're on that a little bit and, and trying to see if we can, if that, how that can help us. Not really, not necessarily only budgeting. It's about expertise.
Yeah.
It's about moving the district forward with the best possible people on board. So, that's really, that is the focus.
Right.
Yeah.
I have Commissioner Peterson's letter. Have, has that gone to the school board and association?
No.
No, I've not seen it.
I have it here, and I have two of those budget workshops that show if we kept our budget the same and we put the new numbers in, what would happen? And, and in one other scenario? Is that something you wanna do? Cause it's, it's, I have, I have it.
I think the letter would be good, John. I, I had copies too, but if you could hand that out. And you do have copies of the budget worksheet for what we're gonna put up?
Yeah, there's two, just two pages we can, we can go through, cause it's...
And we, we can, we'll adjust here a little bit our, some of our other, our, uh...
Tank keeper.
I know it.
Thanks.
Were we going to make any changes on the agenda? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it, it, twelve was added, twelve, we added two-five.
And two-two.
And two-two. I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend that we just deal with two-two and we move two, zero, and two-five, cause you haven't read two-five. And so, we, we move those and act on two-two, would be my recommendation.
So, this did come on the first?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, no, I went to the website and got it from the Department of Taxes. I, I, I thought it had to be somewhere.
We, we got, we got information from Brad James from AOE.
Just two line, or yeah?
And, and so, we got some data and, and more to follow, but we did not receive, uh, the letter. So, John, can you just highlight some of the, the key areas? And I know the board will...
Okay, well, let's go to page two.
Well, we only got page nine. No, base education, go ahead.
This, it looks like the equalized pupil count is down zero-point-seven percent statewide, which is exactly the same percentage it was down last year, so... The base education amount, um, is on page three, representing the amount per pupil that would be supported by base homestead rates. And that's up, hundred-and-seventy-four dollars or one-point-nine percent. This is one of those numbers that the legislature could, could change, so, um, but that's where it stands right now. School spending, the AOE does surveys of business managers and they get information, excuse me, and at this point, they're using three-point-oh-nine percent statewide, um, down from last year and closer to what it was in two thousand and thirteen. So, that means when they figure out the tax increase for both residential and non-residential, they're using this as a, as a basis that schools are gonna spend that much more money. On page four...
Can I, can I just highlight something on three? That base rates projected in this letter are premised on a growth rate that school boards can work to bring down during the budget process.
Where are you, what section?
I'm, I'm on the, um, the, uh, one, two, three, fourth paragraph.
Okay.
And I think that's consistent with the governor's message of spending is the issue.
And is, is, under school spending, John, is, are those, are, are those rates based on settled contracts?
Some of it, and I, I do think that, um, you heard the name Brad James. He, he does a lot of this work. He, he surveys everybody he can. He asks, "What, what do you think's gonna happen? Is your contract settled? And what do you think's gonna happen in your district?"
Okay.
So, um, it's not, um, it, I guess it's not purely mathematical, it's some of it surmising. But I know he does a lot of advising to the, the fiscal committees and then to, to the tax commissioner, so...
Okay.
On page four, the grand list is up zero-point-three percent statewide. We'll know, we'll know in a couple of weeks where we are. Our assessor didn't think there'd be much change, um, so, and he's been, he's been pretty accurate. So, I, well, you'll see later, I haven't changed the CLA for any of our calculations yet. And then, the next bullet is the property tax adjustments for income. Thing we've been talking about, nearly two-thirds of Vermont homeowners pay the bulk of their education tax based on income. And then the last sentence says that it's, um, forecasted that these adjustments will be up five million dollars. So, that's a three-point-three percent increase.
So, is that, they're, they're raising the rate from one-point-eight to one-point-nine-four is the plan?
Yes, yes. So, that increases the base of people. Other revenue sources, this is, I think this is good news. It's up twelve million dollars at two-and-a-half percent. And then, the last part of this is the education fund, and, um, from the general fund, I mean. And, you know, we've heard about budget cuts there for this year. Hundred-million-dollar gap in the general fund is what I heard, and this is seven days today, so... So, in other words, to keep, and then, on page five, the, getting to the punchline, an increase of two cents in the base homestead property tax rate and the same rate increase in the non-residential rate gets the reserve up above the statutory limit of three-and-a-half percent. And, um, I, I think I need to know more about why the non-residential rate, um, it, it talks about in there, it's forty-seven-point-four percent of total education spending, and there's some, something that triggers when it's at least thirty-four percent. So, I, I don't, I don't understand that, but I, that's something I'll, I'll dig into. And then on page six, um, I think our, I think our board and some of our citizens understand this, and at the middle paragraph, "At budget time, there may be confusion as to why a flat budget results in a rate increase." We saw that last year when the recommendation was, I think, six-cent tax increase at the beginning. But there's local spending, which we know, um, local appraisals, meaning there's effect on this, on the CLA, and statewide spending, which affects that tax rate. So, that determines why a flat budget might, um, might result in a tax increase. It says here that, oh yeah, the last par, last sentence in that paragraph, "With the base amount and base rates in this letter, school districts without increases in spending per pupil will not have homestead property tax hikes." So, that's what they fashioned, a two-cent tax increase in addition to the base spending amount. And we'll see that on, on page nine when we get there. On page seven, it says, "Has the district lost outside revenue?" That's another reason a budget could go up. I think we're in pretty good shape this year, at least to hold. Our, our carryover from the audit will be similar to last year. So, we didn't lose on that, and we're gaining on tuition from, um, Grand Al and Georgia school districts.
Do, do we know how this plays out for the state?
Outside revenue, you mean?
Yeah.
On that gain or loss, I'm not sure what the projections are.
Yeah, I don't know.
And that's gonna affect our rate, so...
Yeah. Whether there's a...
That's true.
Variability.
So, then on page nine, um, page nine, there's one of those budget worksheets. We've been working on that for years. Tell us the story, John. I think that, um, basically, I changed three things on here, the things that were in, um, Mary Peterson's letter. The base education amount went to ninety-four-fifty-nine, and the residential rate went to a dollar, and the non-residential rate went to a dollar-fifty-three and a half. So, it, it generates a very small tax increase of point-one-six percent, three dollars on a, on a hundred thousand dollars of residential value. So, it, it lines up with what, um, what she said in the letter.
But these assumptions, John, are...
Oh, yes, I didn't change our, this last year's budget using this year's rates.
Revenue, revenue, equalized pupils, et cetera.
Right.
Can we make sure we put titles on these things?
Like...
This will be, this will be two, yeah, I mean, this is two thousand and fifteen budget with two thousand and sixteen state rates, right?
Yes.
F-teen.
Or fif, or two thousand and fourteen with two thousand and fifteen rates.
No, it's not fourteen, it's fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
Yeah, it's fifteen's budget with sixteen's rates.
With sixteen rates, okay.
We can, uh, put a... I had asked John actually quickly to pull this together, cause this, this one tells the best story. And I think it does. We, we know right now, as, as John just said, you know, preliminary, we have equalized pupil changes. In the past, we saw that down. Right now, preliminary is up.
Yep.
We know revenue will likely stay about the same or a slight increase, John?
Right, but I didn't factor any of that.
Yep, and then obviously budget. So, you know, obviously, there's some pieces of the puzzle that are starting to become...
So, where does the, uh, supposed budget come from?
Well, it's, in the scenario two...
The three-point-oh-nine?
Yeah, I use the state, yes, I just use that number. And, uh, the only other thing I changed besides what was on the first page, or the, the levels from the state, the rates, was the equalized pupils that David just mentioned. So, if, if our spending went up three-point-oh-nine percent and we adjusted our equalized pupils, that would be a five, basically a five-and-a-half cent tax increase or three-point-four-one percent. So, that at least gives, gives you a little bit of, just a first look at, okay, what, what, what could happen here? We still have to, we still have to adjust revenues. We, these are not real numbers in the expenditures, but at least it gives you a first look at it.
And excess spending threshold, John, can you just touch on that?
Yes, I, page eleven's kinda, if you go to page twelve, um, I think I, I, I think I've cried wolf on this a little bit, but I, I at least wanna show you why I cried wolf. The, um, the top page is what we just got from the Agency of Education in November twentieth. And the excess spending threshold, which is calculated now, is seventeen thousand, one-oh-three. One reason is that the NEEP index, the cost of living, is up higher than what had been projected before, but that's a only small part of it. If you look at the second section down below, this is what we got from the Agency of Education last March when the testimony was going on. And these, this is where I got the, um, the number, um, that we've been using for a while here as far as what the threshold would be. And you can see down there that the estimate from two thousand and fifteen to sixteen was, only went up about four hundred dollars to sixteen-oh-twenty-seven, and then it was flat in two thousand and seventeen. And then it was flat in 2017. So, I either missed something, or I didn't, I, anyway, it's not as dire as what we were looking at.
You like it when you're shoot, shoot, high and coming.
Well, I didn't mean to be, I thought I was accurately reporting, so, but anyway.
It's still trending in the direction, though, John, of, you know.
Right, there, there was a reset of the base here to 2014, that's one thing. And the second thing is that that statutory multiplier will go down in 2017 to 121%.
Right.
And it used to be 125, so there is a, there is a tightening.
So how realistic do you think the use of the 3.06%, 3.09% is in estimating where we're going to, where are you going to end up with the budget? Is it too soon to know that?
It's a little too soon, but if you look at what we've done the last three years. Our increase in spending is, was 3.74% in fiscal 13, 2.09% in fiscal 14, and 3.05 last year. So it's, it's in the neighborhood.
And there's nothing you've been able to identify at this point that's a wild card in our list that control things, how to kill them?
Well, that's why, that's why I did, that's why I identified things that I want to make sure don't be, don't become that.
Sure, okay, well.
And we, we still have a lot of work to do because of the contracts just being settled. We're loading the budget again with, with great numbers, I mean accurate numbers, so it's a good thing.
So, as far as, maybe this is too early, but I'll throw it out there anyway. I mean, as far as sideboards for proceeding with what you're looking at for the budget. Let me throw out as a proposal that, that one way that we look at one scenario is essentially keeping the programs that we have and maintaining the programs that we have.
Right.
And being able to do what David wants to accomplish with the 2020 plan. And then the second would be, as a sideboard again, would be a 0% increase in the budget and what that would entail. Or is that a fruitless exercise that is using up too much of your time? But I, I think if you have those two sideboards, then we can adjust in between there, if necessary, when we get to talking more nuts and bolts. I just throw that out there for.
Another comment I would make is that I think those are good, the thrust of that is right, I think. Question here is how much pressure are we going to see on per pupil spending? And should it be the per pupil spending that's flat year to year versus the, versus the budget that's flat year to year? But I, I just sense that there's a lot of external pressure on the per, you know, per pupil spending. That's why I think it's really good that we understand what contributes to that. The discussion on blast sizes are mandated, you know, understanding that better, I think is going to be really important. If that ends up being the place we get pushed the hardest.
But I guess with the per pupil spending, if you looked at it that way, that would probably give a little more leeway, because it wouldn't be a 0% budget.
Well, I'm not sure if it does or not, depends on what's happening.
Well, we have more pupils, we have more equalized pupil, which presumably.
That part of it works to help us.
Right, so, so that sideboard is actually less dire, possibly.
Perhaps. But I, I only offer it that way because I think that.
It's, it's, basically, I think, the 15 students, it's, it would generate about $200,000, so it'd be a penny.
Yeah, it's a wash, just a vault.
Yeah, we're doing a penny there.
I, I do like the idea of starting to talk in, in parallel, because I think we do have to be informed about the per pupil.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think that has to be part of what we see.
Well, we'll see, we'll see the number, just. I think there's a finite, I think it's reasonable for us to give a request for a finite number of bounding cases.
Yes.
An infinite number of them, which they're, which they literally could be, okay?
Well, I think, and I, I think what I'm hearing, and it will be a process to get there, is not to make per pupil spending a calculation based on necessarily a total budget. But to really think about what goes into the drivers of per pupil spending. But I think, I think Martin's guardrails are kind of where we would typically look, and don't create, I'd, I'd be surprised if David, you and John aren't already thinking that way.
And one thing about getting to a zero budget and the steps to get there, it, it's, it's a little hard to get it really accurate. So if you had to rely on it, it can, it can be done, but it is a tremendous amount of work.
Well, I think, I think it's a material, I mean, you'll know your aggregate dollars, and I, I think it's directionally, where would, where would the big ticket items be? Because it's, it's not, there might be 20% of that, that total dollar amount that would come from 100 line items. But 80% of it's likely to come from 20 line items, if that, or 10.
We've also, in addition to what the, the plan has been, we've asked principals to really look at what they need, and, and, and our department heads. Just to make sure that, wow, if, if it's not in the budget, at least it was talked about. The, the transportation is going through some changes, organize, not organizationally, but there's a long time employee going to leave. And he'll be a mechanic, new head mechanic, and, and got some ideas, and maybe they can incorporate some savings, so it's.
That's collaboration.
We don't even discourage that, we've encouraged it.
I mean, when you say maintain the programs that we have, that's kind of a wishy washy concept as well. It's that they, going out and asking folks what they need, and that may be more than the bare minimum for maintaining programs. But, yeah, I think it gives enough of a general outline of what needs to be done.
In, in fairness, I mean, the, well, it's not, it's not fair, actually, at all, but. But one thing about the notion of maintaining programs is it doesn't, we've, we've had a long series of conversations about zero-based budgeting versus maintaining programs. And I think one of the expectations, I think, that should always be in there is if programs are not adding value to achievement of the ends in a, in a material way, we should be evaluating redeploying those expenses to areas that continue, you know, that do support achievement of the ends. And, and then if, you know, it's, it's really challenging the status quo in making sure that our focus is on, you know, career and college readiness for, for students. And being deliberate and maybe a little ruthless sometimes about that.
That's part of what, this is, again, you know, John has been at the table with us, Stuart, and certainly all of our central office staff around. Here's what we worked on, here's where we want to be, and then how, what do we need to make sure that you're going, how you're going to get there? And so, some of it is maybe kind of a status quo program, because we certainly have programs, curricular, that are working to that end. But we aren't absolved to saying, you need, then we're going to have to make the harder choices. But the, the goal here right now is that we want to be, we want to be here, and what are you going to do next year and the year after to get there? So there's, there's some additional method, you know, methods in play around, around that. So I, I understand the kind of the status quo, I interpret that as moving the district forward, kind of thing, in a, in a mindful, planned way. It's kind of the way I interpreted that. This is going to come back up at the next meeting, we have time on budget again, so.
What's the, what's the context of the next meeting? We will be, be hearing from, at what point do we hear from building administrators, or what do you?
We haven't, we haven't in the past done that.
Okay.
Again, we'll, we'll talk more about that. My thinking is, when, when we, when it comes back up, I, I'd like to still get a little, maybe this is enough clarity, but I think it's, you haven't really had a huge chance to digest a lot of what you were just given. My recommendation was that we kind of work for additional guidance that comes out of our next meeting around the 16 budget.
So it would be a preliminary budget, is, is what's on the schedule, and it would, it would be what Martin referred to as maintaining programs. Sometimes they call it a, oh, I can't remember that term, boy. It's a business office term, sorry. Flat budget? No, it's not that, though.
Well, you're going to, so basically.
Something like that.
But you're working, you're working currently to load the new contracts.
Right.
And basically roll those over.
Right.
And it will, this next budget will, will look at the contractual obligations and those known, those known pieces, kind of as, as an out of the gate.
You know, as, as part of that, and this may be asking a lot, but given that we do have some budgets that are, or some contracts that are multi-year. And we know that, that salary and benefits are 80% of our spending. Is it possible to look at a multi-year, look if we can even go out one year, or at least through?
With some general assumptions on revenue and equalized pupil kind of thing, or?
I think the big one there is, yes, and the big one there is how we handle turnover, and, and.
Well, it might be good to, at least, even if, even if it was some base assumptions on turnover, if the turnover's been whatever it's been. Put that in as a base with the contracts that we have in place, so we know what it would look like, and then we get an idea of where, where we might have some, you know, room to move on a, on a going forward basis.
Okay. It's good, so it's, it's back on, it's back in front of you on the, and you'll see it again on the 16th, but.
This is great, getting it as early as now, and I, I mean, incorporating the information from Monday, thank you.
John worked hard on getting this, I mean, I kind of asked him actually today if that budget worksheet could be included, and he was like, I don't know, maybe I'll have to pull that together, but thanks for John to.
Oh, that's all right, dude, Thanksgiving gets in the way. Which I was really happy it did, quite frankly. I think we all needed a break.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item 11.
So, John, you want to talk a little bit about stewardship as well? And what we've been working on?
Do we have a?
Yeah.
Well, what, what you have, if you go to the back page of 2.5.
Yeah.
Page 23 of the, of the, what do you call it, exhibits. This is what Dan was, Dan and Chris Shaw helps, helped navigate us through this this summer, which was our stewardship plan for, for nine years. And it's, this is just one page, but you can kind of see the funding sources on the top, and then the uses of funds and what projects we're doing. Now, there's many pages of detail that's not here, to show what specifically roof replacements are going to be, where, and that kind of thing. But this, this is standardized with the, with the city, and we can maintain this together. So at budget presentations or times where it looks, looks like we're going to recommend a new bond issue in, in fiscal, for fiscal 17. So we could, we would have the city's data there to see if it matches up or not with them, so.
So you have, you have something similar like this? We have something similar like this for the city's projections.
Yeah.
We're just looking, okay.
Right. I just, this is just a exhibit, evidence for our, our plan, and it's pages and pages, so it's, that's why. We're doing some work, we have Annette Harton who's helping me put together a plan like we had in 2008, where we had pictures and history. And we've gathered all the history since that, we've done that into one, one spreadsheet or worksheet, so that people can see how money's been expended on, on facilities for seven, six or seven years now. So that'll be there.
Connected to the stewardship.
Right. And I mentioned, in, if, if we want to focus a little bit on the middle page, right where it says 23, the new and repurposed bond costs. In fiscal 15, in the current year, we have the elevators at the, at the middle school, $410,000. And right now, the project costs are 397, so we're, we're doing okay there. The roof at Chamberlain and the high school came in on budget, so that was good. The window replacement is, what we're doing with that is, we've, we've incurred almost, I think, $40,000 of cost on testing and mediating, remediating that PCBs. So our, our architect has been working with the engineers, the scientists at Cardinal, ATC Cardinal, on getting a specification that will work so that disposal of the, of the bad material, the PCBs, can be handled correctly. And they're just about done, but it, it looks like we can do about half of what we wanted to do with the windows, because of the additional cost, to stay in this $210,000 budget. So our, our plan would be to do, call it the west wing, it's where, in the front of the high school, it's, it's on the left side. We would do the first floor and the second floor windows this summer. And that's, then we'd have. Facing the front, right. There is a cost, if we did, if we did that wing and it faced the back, faced the middle school, it'd be cheaper, but then next year, we'd have the whole second floor to do. And so we're, we're, that'll go to bed soon, and you'll see all that information. The second, the second part of that is to go to fiscal 16, and our, our hard costs on the elevator are about $750,000. And the restrooms, we have, we're working on the RFP for that.
Is that versus this, is that 615?
615, right.
So we already know that's over.
Right, and, and we still have to look at that, it, the work, it's in the gym, as far as relocating some of that stuff. So, so I'm, I'm thinking of, and David, and we've talked about this, is scaling that restroom job down, so that we take care of a real key restroom on the first floor, or the second, by my office. It's, that will help us be in compliance for eight, with ADA, and then use the other funds to do this elevator. That's, that's.
And not the other bathrooms?
Yeah, at this point.
Well, again, we're, it's, it's, again, we have an ADA-related issue in elevator and access.
And it's both, they're both ADA problems.
So it's, it's, it's a critical, we know all of them are critical, we're trying to be, you know, smart around how we, how we move forward here. This is a, this is a, this is a huge, huge project here at the high school.
So anyway, but that, we, that's our, that's our thought, it hasn't been presented to you for action or anything yet, but it, it's, it will be, I think, or we'll mix up, make sure we have everything lined up.
So that's, again, part of it, it was just to get you, I mean, you've, we've already talked about this, the stewardship plan is also a part that we, I earlier shared, that's also available to the city. Again, the work that Dan and, and I'm losing his name, from the city who helped.
Chris Shaw.
Chris Shaw. You know, that work has been, is going to play really a strong importance into the master planning and visioning around looking at property.
Will this work be in the budget books?
Sure, it can be.
I think it's, it's great work, I do, I mean, I think the school's always taken a leadership role on, on the facility stewardship, and I think the city followed suit. So to have this comprehensive, even though it's.
Hard to, yeah.
Hard to absorb, it's, it's, it's the roadmap, and.
And we can, we can.
And look at it.
We can do it side by side, you know, or something like that. And then one other thing on the, the bathrooms, we want, we want to get, accomplish what we said we would do. We, we're looking one more time at these other small projects for next year and see, see what can be moved around a little bit, so that, so we have some flexibility. But really, Bart Misselli, our director of facilities, is, he's really invaluable, he, he has his eyes open on everything. They did some work over, there was a slippery floor up in the science wing, over the, over the break, they, they, they ground it down and put a new floor in over. He called me Thanksgiving, said, well, I have to check on those guys, and I'll be, I said, go home, you know? So, so I, I've, I've gotten some real confidence in him over time, and so just thought you should hear that.
So I have a question, kind of a broader question, I, I know this is. So I have a question, kind of a broader question, I, I know this is, this is good, great work for looking at facility stewardship and such, but I think at one point we, we talked about, and maybe, maybe this is being done, I, we talked about having kind of a broader financial, long-term look. I know there's going to be, would be a lot of assumptions involved, but, but a look at overall finances for the school, which would include looking at the demographics of both our, our, well, looking at the cohorts that we have going through our system right now, the demographics that tell us what we should expect as far as enrollment, but also demographics as far as what we expect as, with retirements and, and turnover as far as teachers and such, and then just basic guesses or projections of what the percentage increases for various other costs would be, and looking out four or five years at like total budget. Is that something that, did we talk about that before, was I dreaming about that?
Yes, no.
It was a year ago tonight.
Oh, John.
No, no, seriously, we, we had the meeting in, it's always a budget meeting, it's always in December, so I'm starting to remember these things, but we did a five-year plan of revenue.
Right.
We had quite a year last year, and so we haven't got back to the expenses.
But it didn't have the detail.
I think it's, I think it's been a lack of resources, quite frankly.
To, to be able to get, I mean, we've been very busy with negotiations and all those things, but at least that part will be lifted for a little while. Yeah, it just seems, I mean, isn't that needed to feed into the master planning and visioning?
And it is, I mean, I, I think part of the work with a master planning can funnel and fuel some of the, you know, we're taking things out to twenty twenty-five, you know, and beyond on the master plan to look at growth expectations, city, city build-out, you know, what's that mean to students?
Right, right.
So I, I, I think that, you know, that, although the master planning and visioning work isn't going to look at as specific as, as some of the grain size that you're talking about, but it's, we, we could, we could likely apply it. We're definitely have demographic data, what we don't, what we won't have necessarily is all the, you know, the, we're going to have to make assumptions on the financial side. And in fact, this is what John mentioned, Annette Harton, who's actually working, working with us to, to develop that model a little bit, to understand what would be, so first of all, master planning and visioning, looking at what are the opportunities that we feel are essential, and what are the cost implications of those opportunities through those varying options? And so as we look at the long-range piece, we want to make sure opportunity is there, but what are the costs associated with doing such? And as you get out there, I think that's the part of the problem with, with the five-year plan, although now that we have contracts at least for, for three years, we can certainly have better clarity on three, and then it gets less clear on four and five, or, you know, those, those out years, but. So I think we can, Martin, do it. I don't know to what, you know, to how detailed it would be to, to appease what you're thinking, or without knowing more.
Well, I, I think it's, and I remember Dan talking a little bit about this, I mean, it's good to have that projection, and on an annual basis, you can adjust those numbers because we'll know more, and we can make the nearer term, four years out, look a little more accurate, and then add a fifth year, and that should be part of, I think, the process for us to kind of see what's coming down the pipe, so we're not surprised.
Well, we have the, we have the makings of the, the bigger, you know, what we're, what's driving our work is, you know, our work to educate our children based on our ends and, and wanting to adhere. So this is the, you know, from my perspective, drive, the driver around making sure that students are, are ready. Underneath that are the costs to, in each one of these years, to make sure that's happening. We do have data around the contract piece, so I think we can plug a lot of this in. I, I do, you know, I think we, we have the means to plug it in, I think it's a resource issue that I want to be careful to say, oh, we could do it, you know, because I, I have to be sensitive, and again, as John indicated, we've added some helpful contracted resources with like an Annette Harton type to help us do this. It may really prove to be that, hey, David, you've created a plan that's not financially feasible, you know, in meeting our ends.
That's the purpose of doing it, is to try to figure out where the-
You know, and, and my twenty-
There's implications in it.
And the twenty-twenty is going to have to be revised, or you're going to have to do something totally different.
Yeah, and I just, looking back, I mean, if five years ago we understood the projection for our, for the teachers who are in the bottom right corner of, of our, you know, our highest paid teacher, on, on the percentage that we were going to have, and how much money was going to go to that, would we have started doing something different then? Would we have shifted our new hire practice to have, you know, less, or younger junior teachers than, than we did four or five years ago, because we were only adding to that problem? You know, I don't know what this will show this time, but, but I mean, that's something that perhaps we could have foreseen, and, and that's kind of why I would like to see something like that.
No, I think-
It is resource-intensive, that's the problem.
Sure.
And the other thing is, is that whoever's going to work with it, and whoever's going to review it, has to have some appreciation for the growing uncertainty in the numbers as you go out in time, and not overreact to something that's out there, to simply say, that could be a problem, what can we do to wrestle it down to less uncertainty?
Right. Understand kind of the risk percentage.
I very much advocate doing it. There's a learning process in figuring out how to manage it. So I don't think you can expect it to be perfect to begin with, but I would really encourage making a cut at it and trying to get a feeling for, okay, I'm, at least understand these kinds of uncertainties that are out there, that I got to deal, be dealt with.
So you're going to hear more about master planning and visioning, and I think there is some, some cross-connections to.
There's cross-connection, yeah, too.
Yeah, and we can, we'll keep your-
It has, it has the potential to change a lot of conceptual things, more solidify them.
So healthcare benefits and trends, I think we've, we've already addressed some of those particular pieces, and the assumptions that were shared, I don't know if there's anything else that people want more to talk about around the healthcare trends, I think we've talked about that a, a fair amount, I don't know if there's any specific questions around that, without blabbing more.
Well, I'd like to-
Blab some more?
Well, no, no, I, I'd like to hear what, I'd like to know, I'd like a report from our V-HI representative after she gets more into it like in four months or something, that's what I'd like to hear.
Or even soon.
Well, we know that there's going to be a percent, we're going to get some information on Monday, I guess.
Do you have a monthly meeting, or is it bimonthly?
Well, the, the DFR has approved a range of rates that were submitted, so the board will be voting on Monday as to what the actual rate will be, and I think without, I don't really know what my restrictions are on talking about anything, but the high end of the rate is what John referred to at the four and a half percent, so.
Which is what we've been given, you know?
What's the low end of the rate?
Is good, that's what I don't know, well, you know what, I'll, I'll get slapped later, three point nine.
Oh.
Oh.
Wow, that's pretty low.
But actually, I already am getting a lot of good information that I think would be helpful to start talking about.
Into our equation of, of information, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should plan on it.
Yeah, and, and equally importantly is, I mean, there's very informed people at V-HI and Visbit and Blue Cross Blue Shield who can be available to come to board meetings as well, so.
Great, so without further questions, we'll move on, and we did add two-two and two-point-five.
I thought you took two.
My recommendation is this, that we, you have two-point-five, we move that to the next meeting along with two-oh, and you act on two-point-two tonight, and that would be my recommendation.
So we discussed some modifications to two-point-two on Monday?
So, so do you have the notes as far as which ones we've already said yes, yes, and yes to, as far as the-
I did not, I did not bring those.
Oh, I, I actually gave them to you.
I think we got to one, we got through one, as it was all okay, when we got to two, it was.
I know yes, yes, and yes was for one, if you wanted, I mean, yes, that, it was a reasonable interpretation, it was adequate data, and it was-
For one?
In compliance, am I right about the compliance part, yes?
Yes.
I know that we all, I recall that.
Yep.
We did not agree to number two, but now there's a change to that.
Well, added evidence.
Two was the issue of adequate data, I believe.
Right, and I think it's adequate now, the evidence.
Any other comments on detail policy two? So reasonable interpretation, adequate data, and in compliance?
Yes, yes.
Yes, and yes.
Three, I think-
Three, I think we were good.
Was in compliance, yes, yeah.
Four was an issue.
Four and six was for the two that we were looking at, I think five, we were all yes, yes, and yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll review that one just to be sure, but on four, do you want to talk to the changes in evidence? David?
Yeah, was this that I didn't give enough, you know, about the, any incidents, and so that, I mean, I do know that in the future, you know, giving you more kind of a-
Grid.
Yeah, the, the grid or kind of the, the frequencies, but again, I, I, I added this that, you know, those that have occurred since the last reporting period have been handled according to the crisis team procedures and protocol.
So interpretation was yes, does that suffice as adequate data?
Yes.
Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
Number five, you did make a couple of quick modifications here.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, don't we have number four?
We just did that.
We just did that.
Well, this was a-
Okay.
We did three. It was, yes, yes, yes.
Number five, we were fine with, the only thing that was added was-
Five was fine, six-
Yeah, which is a good point around, you know, that we're, and I'm, I'm honored that Martin brought that up, I think he did around, you know, that our facilities are, are places where people should be proud to work in. To John's point around Bart and his facility, and the facility work, so.
And six was, I think, just a coordination issue of administrators, teachers, and staff.
Yep.
That was the interpretation.
And I, the other part was around the evidence around providing, will be in the future, giving kind of the grid of evaluations that are due, or, you know, due or done.
Expected and completed, yeah.
Yeah, and that will happen at the next-
At that point in time, yeah. So six is yes, yes, and yes?
Yes, yes, yes.
So overall, two-point-two, by default, is reasonable interpretation?
Yes.
Adequate data?
Yes. Yes.
And in compliance?
Yes.
All right, so we'll sign off on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item thirteen, the bid for Stormwater Drainage Improvements Project at Orchard.
So there was a question in the board packet about this, this particular case too, which maybe is important just to know that was responded to. The, as we already talked about, this is an unfortunate additional expense that we did not anticipate, although when, when reviewing and digging into the particulars of Orchard, this came, this first came to notice for us within the last three, now, three months, four months? Three months, that we had an odor problem. So when you have an odor problem in a classroom, sometimes you wonder was, is there something within the room? Is there something left in the bookshelf, is there, whatever the case may be? Further, further review reflected that there was moisture in, in our unit ventilator areas, and when we put unit ventilators on, we put them, they placed them on top of the carpet, and so some of those carpets, that carpet remnant was wet, and so it had obviously an odor that was emanating. But then when we further reviewed, it was actually not just the carpet, but it was the tile. And the tile and the glue in this particular room was still wet, and it had a high, high moisture content on this, in this room. So classroom teacher was moved, classroom teacher and students were moved to an alternate location, then we began to assess and look at it. Obviously, we tested it first, we wanted to make sure that it was appropriate, I think I've kept you informed on some of those things around the testing that had, had been done. And what then the conclusion was, is that we've got such a high water table, we have, you know, moisture essentially coming in through the slab, the concrete slab, and it has added and made it really difficult to cure the, the concrete. We've handled the moisture, we've handled the odor, but we've concluded that the, the, the potential for reoccurrence is highly likely, given that the water table issue is a problem at Orchard. So when we looked at the drainage, the perimeter draining, even as back as nineteen ninety-five when we looked at it with engineer Steve Vok, really, there's nothing that's connected. What there is there is either not sized correctly or not connected to allow the, the perimeter of the foundation to drain. And so I, I, obviously, John and facility folks, you know, and I gathered, we obviously had conversations with the staff, but one of the things is, we need to, you know, this is a problem, and it needs, something needs to be done with it, otherwise, we're going to, we're likely to reoccur, depending on moisture and water and et cetera, that we're going to be right back at a place, and I can't tell you that it's going to be always that room, it could be, it could be another room based on kind of the flow. So the recommendation right now is to install perimeter drains with redundancy so that it's not all dependent upon one, and that by doing this, will mitigate the moisture problem, and will ensure that the, the land, the Orchard land, if you will, has better drainage, which continues to make it a piece of property that's going to be of value to us and operate as a school as it should, so.
So is, we don't have insurance that covers this?
We do not.
We, we had insurance that covered the damage to the room, to the rug, the, the floor, so after it was twenty-five hundred deductible, so we, we got about five thousand dollars, but the, the problem outside isn't, isn't insurable again.
Even the, even the water table issue, the flood, we have no flooding insurance?
Well-
No. Just asking.
Not with groundwater, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean, and part of this was, and, and this is, was asked in the question too, is, you know, can we wait? I mean, we have a lot of other things, we've got master planning and visioning, and again, some of those are, are longer term, but, you know, investing significant amount of money in property that, you know, we may not recoup in any way, if it's not going to be a problem, if it hasn't been a reoccurring problem, why? The, the reason now, first of all, as you all know, you know, humidity and moisture levels are diminished during the winter months, and they'll increase during the spring, depending on snow, temperature, water runoff, all of that, we're likely to be in a place where it could be problematic, and if, and if we get three or four rooms, you know, we can't relocate three or four rooms, we were lucky to be able to do one of them, because we are currently now using project rooms at Orchard, so we don't have, we didn't have a lot of flexibility here. So the recommendation is, is that to mitigate that risk, we take care of the issue now. Again, going to be a little bit messy to do so during this December month, if approved, but far better than doing it when we had our crisis and I got to move people, so I think it does continue to add value, it keeps, you know, the, the value of the property. I suspect that if this had been done some years ago, we never would have probably had some of the cash outlay that we've had around the, some of the issues in the past. I, I can't one hundred percent say that it's been an uptick, it certainly seems that we, we've been talking about kind of this type of issue at Orchard more, more than probably they did for the first ten years of its existence. So I'm, I'm, the nineteen ninety-five, when that was done, there wasn't perimeter drain, you know, plans drawn in, again, it's five feet down essentially, onto the, onto the, the foundation area where they would go, and that's essentially what, what is the plan.
Is the scope of this, the, cover the entire, whole building?
It's, it's basically all of the south side, starting at the, the south side location and working your way all around the, around that location until essentially the front of the school. The front of the school, the walkway, that would not be done, it would be basically everything except that.
And did the engineering study consider the scope of the thing, whether it was appropriate, or?
Yes, they, they've been heavily involved in, in this, and, you know, I, I also said, you know, could we chunk it? Could we do just this part of it and not do this part of it, particularly in that back area? But one of the things that's really important is that redundancy in the water table, does we have- we have two exits? And that's been part of the, the concern. And we also have pipe sizing issues, you know, that are going to be addressed. Some of this is, we've also been in contact with the city, and there's some city upgrades that are going to be done as, as a result as well, which they see, which they say are inadequate, and that's going to be at their expense. So, heavily involved engineering study, and again, they're confident that this will mitigate the issue.
I mean, really, who really wants to tear up your yard on December 5th or whenever? I mean, we don't, but it, it, I think the consequences of not doing it in the spring, or even if it reoccurs next summer, are going to be pretty high. I don't think we'll have rooms for to move people. And there's, there are a couple adjoining rooms, the, the floor is tacky because it never dries. And so it's not, it's not just that one room.
Aren't there issues with doing this in the freezing cold weather? I mean, no?
No, again, the engineers, I mean, obviously, you know, they'll work year-round, it's harder on equipment and frost and all of that, but, you know, we also have challenges around egress, and so we'll, we'll have plans, because a lot of the classes have, have to have two egresses, those that connect, we can use that and an alternate. So we'll have to be mindful around doing the south end and, you know, piping and filling and then moving on, et cetera, but...
Does this legal, is there any landscaping issues in the spring?
It, it will, I mean, they're not, obviously, the grass isn't going to grow, there's going to be, you know, I, I think, right now, there's also paved blacktop walkways, which, from my perspective, are also part of the problem, because the walkways are very, very near the threshold entrances of the doors. So when you add the heavy rain or high, high water, you've got likely rain mitigation that's been coming in there, too. So, the plan is, when we do the perimeter drain, they're going to take out that blacktop hard surface. It's not in great shape, anyway, though.
Well, I guess what I'm, what I'm fishing for is, is this, it inclusive of all the scope of what we're going to encounter over the total project?
It doesn't, there, there will be some selective repaving outside a doorway.
Right.
Not the whole nine yards. And, and we talked about that with, with Steve, and in the walkthrough with the contractors, there were five that showed interest, no, four, and all bid. So, it, it, it didn't seem, it didn't seem like we have a great plan to redo it all and use concrete or whatever yet, so it, it, we can, we'll get by with grass, grass in there in the spring, and then we'll figure a little bit more. It won't be a huge cost, but there'll be more costs, yes.
So, so it's not, to Dan's point, it's not a comprehensive...
Bring it back to the, bring it back to the exact where it is, no. And I don't know that we're interested in bringing it back to where, where it was either around the, the walkway, the way they've had it. I think with exit door pavers and things of that nature, you know, it may be, it may be serviced better.
Well, whatever it turned out to be, I just was wondering whether we're going to see something, and it still would be within this fiscal year, right? It probably would happen in, I would guess it would happen in May, May, probably.
Final, final...
And is the contractor ready to go with this?
The, the project manager, she's, she is waiting for my text. I said, "We'll meet Monday," and she goes, "Why would you wait two days?" And so I have a meeting tomorrow at 1:00, and with the engineer and David, and we'll sign contracts, and then they're, they're going to bring equipment in Friday and start Monday, so...
There are challenges with equipment.
If, if it's approved.
Is it something that is worth waiting to do over the holidays while there's a break?
Well, they will be doing it over the holidays.
Still doing it over the holidays, okay.
It's a fairly, you know, it's a good size, you're moving a lot of earth, and the equipment is, you can't get big equipment in there, and...
And why deprive the kids who've seen the digger out there? You know, I mean, come on, this is going to be the highlight of the school year.
Good distraction.
Well, some of that, some of that Orchard school expenses are going to be for rugs and all kind of, you know, there's a lot, a lot goes on when you dig around this school.
I don't know if you would, can we talk a little bit about the plan for paying for this? Because it looks like this is going to be paid for by reducing, basically, by reducing contributions to the staff retirement fund. Suggestion here is that we would still be meeting the minimum by some $34,000.
That's right.
So the situation here is, we, we funded in the 2015 budget, a contribution to the staff retirement plan that exceeded the actuarial amount?
Right. The estimated actuary amount, you don't know when we're doing the budget, so the estimate was $633,000 would be the requirement. So we put 733 in, we put 100,000 in. Prior year, we put 150 extra in. This year, we, we, like I say, we just got the, the final minimum contribution for this year, and it's smaller, it's less by $34,000.
But we've all, we have intentionally tried to fund that over the required amount?
Definitely.
Because we had some catch-up to do over the past several years? So, in essence, what you're saying is, we're going to take a step back to be at the, or a little above the acquired, required amount?
Right, and it, quite frankly, it's kind of heavy heart, I do that. We recommend it, because we've made some good progress, but I, there isn't any other source of, of funding there that looks like it's going to have significant savings that we can assuredly say that it'll be there.
It's not a great situation, you know?
No. It's, I mean, it's disappointing, because we have been very...
That's right, you're making great, yeah.
The team has been very responsible about funding above the amount, and that's what's helped us get into healthy position.
I mean, I would love to be able to say, you know, I think this is, it's going to go away. I, I just feel like if we, if we, if we wait, I mean, I, I don't know, you know, then, then we also have other, other issues that emerge, and we get people that may not feel well, and then we've got, you know, we've got to find other, you asked me to then bring in a trailer, because we have, we don't have enough classrooms there, or do we push some kids over to where there is an open classroom with a teacher that disconnects them from their school?
Right, it does beg the question, I think, and we've talked about this a lot, especially at the end of last year, with all the elevator issues at the middle school, about maybe the, the need for us to put more money in contingency for things like this, so that decisions that we make don't have to be reversed, you know?
Yeah.
Thoughtful decisions. I mean, I understand why you're, why you're recommending it, but I just, aside from putting money for a kindergarten teacher in contingency, I mean, it seems like we should be budgeting that.
Yeah, well, I mean, part of it is that, as you know, we've, we have worked hard to establish, and John and staff have worked hard to establish the stewardship plan, which has been many, many places where most schools get caught, I'm going to say, most schools get caught in the contingency, you've got a leaky issue, and you, and you find out that it's really old. I, I feel like we have, we have minimized the risk for the district in many ways by identifying these things and being timely. We've identified now, and, and again, good leadership and good facility folks around, still under warranty. We have all the documentation, and a lot of our work is, is all done under warranty. So I think we've been more diligent, so as a result, we've cut down that. There's still, you're right, there's still old buildings.
Things are going to happen, that's my point.
And they are, and so, maybe we've been a little bit too bold in our, in our reductions. Certainly, like elevators, we, they get serviced, and we kind of all say, "Hey, they get serviced, and that's really good," and they tell it, you know?
Along those lines, I believe, in the past, we've talked a bit about establishing a capital reserve fund.
Capital reserve fund, correct.
Would that have been the source for these funds, if it existed?
I, I would say that the capital reserve fund, in my mind, would go towards the funding of the facility stewardship plan, and part of that would be, you know, a contingency amount, which would be, you know, established, that would be a factor of the whole, you know, on, on any one year.
Well, I guess what I'm wondering is, is this a lesson learned along Julie's line that says that rather than, rather than put it in a general contingency, we put it into a facilities contingency of some sort? I don't know, I mean, I don't know, I just...
Well, I, I, we, we could, but the last two years, the state came out and said, "You have a 6.10 tax increase," right out of the gate. So, we had to cut, cut that contingency down this year quite a bit, but you're right, we should even think about, we, our final audit number isn't in yet, if it's higher than what I projected, we, we could talk about putting that into the budget and voting on a capital reserve this year, I think. You're right, we need it.
Well, my thoughts are that we put it there, and maybe if we have to consciously decide that it's not going to be as big or not start just yet, but you'll get some feeling for what you're thinking would be, is how we would get that going, what, what size it ought to be.
I mean, ideally, what I would say to you, and this is, again, we, we brought this up with the legislators last year around, you know, make school construction available, and I wouldn't say new construction, it would be for maintaining and preserving the properties at a rate that would be much more reasonable. And so establishing capital reserve fund or making, you know, school construction maintenance available, we, it isn't, and it's a problem. It's, a lot, a lot of folks are having to, it's just cost, it's just avoidance, as opposed to dealing with it. That, that doesn't solve our problem now, but...
The only thing that concerns me is if you, with a contingency fund, I would want it to have the most flexibility, so that, you know, if it's, excuse me, specifically for capital projects, then what if something happens in another area where you need contingency funds, but you can't use them because they're specified for other, certain other...
Well, that's in essence what we're talking about right now.
Right, yeah.
We're talking about redeploying...
Well, right, but what I'm saying is, may increase the amount in the contingency versus, versus, yeah, general contingency that has flexibility versus making a contingency fund that has such specificity that we can't use it if we need it for something else.
I have a thought, too, if, if, if this was approved, but with the direction to look for other savings through the course of the year, from, from a, from maybe a different line.
So, my, my understanding, also, along those lines, you mentioned that we're still going to have something like 40,000 in the contingency fund?
Right.
Which it probably should stay there, but, I mean, can we decide that if at year-end, that 40,000 hasn't been used, that that will go into the pension?
Yes.
Can that be part of the decision now?
Sure.
And, and if you have other savings between now and then? That we try to get back that 100,000 dollars that we've previously committed?
It'd be savings that'd be real, for instance, if the gas bills, if we had a really warm winter.
Right.
You know, something like that, that doesn't affect any program, it's just...
Right. But I mean, can we, can we make that as part of a motion to approve this, that it's with the understanding that any contingency funds or extra funds essentially left over at year-end, that you're certain about, you know, will be put it towards a pension up to 100,000?
Right, the, the contributions to the pension doesn't have to be legally done until June 30, so we have that kind of flexibility.
It's good, good idea.
So there is, actually, will, you want to take that as a motion, Martin? There is a motion?
Yes, I will, I will move that we approve this purchase with what I said before.
With a contingency on a contingency.
With a contingency, I think Meg didn't need me to repeat that. Okay.
She'll go back and listen to the tape.
She'll go back and listen to the tape.
Any additional questions or discussion, then?
I don't know if anybody's, oh, yeah, we can, we can second it.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, we'll move on to the resolution or white paper regarding school funding and reform.
A copy was provided at your place.
And I, I did receive some comments from Dan, and I could probably get this pushed along. I did, I did catch, it was, it was a mess-up on my, there was a sentence in the second page that didn't make sense, because I didn't quite do a full edit, that "Do not exempt the education community should not be exempt." That should not be exempt, that should be struck. It should read, "Do not exempt the education community from statewide changes to health care." Other than that, I don't think I got any...
I have one other, I think it's a caption, and then it is, if I'll find it here, I'm on page...
There was a format issue as well that you had caught.
Well, it's where you talk about the 160%. On page nine.
Okay.
Misuse of education fund?
Yeah.
I think that the spending is 60% more than the base amount.
Not 160.
Oh, right, right.
So I think the number should be 60%.
60?
60%, 14, 893 is 60% above 9, 285.
Right.
Yeah.
Not 160% above.
Gotcha.
And I think the same is true of the tax as a result of that. So those 160s should become 60s. Or you should be stated a little differently.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, I understand, yep, yep. All right, so that's a couple of...
I had a couple, do you want me to go through them?
Yeah, I was just wanting, I mean, those are just kind of edits, I know there's a couple substantive things that we also wanted to talk about, but if you have edits, we can do first, and then we can talk substantive.
These might fall a little bit into edits, so I'll leave it there. On the, on the summary, in terms of the second bullet point, where you talk about the amount covered by the transfer in 2005?
Yes.
I was just going to suggest to add on to that, as originally established or provided for by law. So just something that, rather than it's just referencing the 2005 transfer, just say that was an original provision?
I'm not sure if that, was that an original provision, or was it just practice?
Actually, that's a good question, I don't know.
My, my understanding is that was, that was practice.
Well, I just put "as originally established" or "as provided for," maybe just not say "by law" then.
So, but is the implication that there were years before this that it was at that level, years prior to 2005?
I don't remember if the years before that were equivalent...
What I'm really just saying...
It was after that year when it really started shifting.
Yeah, and what I'm really saying is, "as originally established," it's just sort of to reference that, that's, that wasn't arbitrary at the time.
And, like, so, that's the year in which Act 68 was passed, is that, is that, is that the, what that means?
Um, I don't know.
Elizabeth is just simply trying to say when it began, or as it began.
And actually, where I put that line was the amount covered...
Well, but the general fund's been putting money into the education fund for 100 years.
For a long time.
But that, that was, that was when the, they started, I mean, it was fairly constant before then. Now, what caused that, I don't recall. That's, I don't think that's the year that Act 68 was in.
I don't know the trend, I don't know the draw from the...
Right, I didn't bring that document, but I can, I can, I can add something, I'll go back there.
And where I put it was the amount covered by the transfer as originally established in 2005. I don't know if that is happening.
Originally is the part that I'm...
Yeah, it's not, I don't think that...
That I'm kind of equivocating on.
That's a good point.
So, you want me to put something in here for why 2005?
I guess maybe, yeah, well, anyway, that's a question I had.
All right, okay.
I had a comment on your bullet point on the second page, where you say amend Act 129?
Yes.
And it was really sort of the rationale for the money following the student, and it's really thereby linking student learning with the delivery system, so something like that.
Okay.
And I think, let me just see.
So, the only thing on that one, Martin, I wonder, you know, I think the pay, resources need to follow, paying the full tu, you know, do you think that, you know, paying the full tuition is the way it's interpreted? I'm, I'm, you know, I think the point al, the point has always been that, under this provision, no money has been, no money has been following.
Yeah.
And it's our premise, I think we're in link with this, that resources should follow the student.
Right, right, so pay the full tuition to the receiver.
Or, or pay, pay an amount, or, you know, pay, pay something...
An agreed upon amount, yeah.
For, for a student, and maybe the base education rate would be, would be, nobody loses in it, you know?
Right.
So, and...
Well, why would it be the tuition that's what other people pay?
Well, because... Well, because, remember, the whole reason they took it away is it was, there was a disincentive because your tuition is, you know, your announced tuition is at fifteen thousand and yours is at eleven. And so i- if we want to make that, if they wanted to make that work, it would, it should have been at, you know, it should have been at a prescribed rate, base rate, not a tuition rate, because tuition's, even in our small communities, they're.
So what happens if the people in Georgia and islands decide that they're going to put the people here under this act instead of the way they're doing it?
Well, they can't because they're, they don't, they don't, they don't follow. They have, don't have a high school. If they did, that's right. They, they don't.
This was when it was school choice, Act one twenty-nine, like, kids in Burlington comes out.
Well, I mean, I mean, perhaps you're right, and if that's right, that's fine. I understand.
I don't, I don't think you're wrong. I think that in some ways that's what should be happening.
Because the islands people have a choice.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. But they aren't, they aren't shopping around. I think one of the things that does need to change around tuition is that if you're having to budget, you'd like to, it would be really good for people to say, it'd be great to have an established base education amount that we all agree to, or whatever that rate is, so that there's no net loss, so.
I'm just, I'm just arguing that I think we ought to have a rate that applies to non-residents. Okay? That's all.
Yeah.
Yes, whatever. I don't need to complicate. I think you've got, you've got.
I mean, the words in this can be, as long as they accommodate that principle.
Right. When we, when, when they hear something like that, when it comes from us, from a South Burlington pay tuition, we, they, we're digging. You know, they're like, everyone who reads this, if it's South, we're not. We, we believe that we want to enact one twenty-nine in a way that's appropriate, and we believe that there should be a set amount to allow opportunities.
And that's some of the reason I added the language around linking the student learning opportunity with the delivery. I thought was relevant to say that, because I do think people look at it as, it's, you know, it's South Burlington alone in that case.
Right.
So language to the effect and agreed upon amount versus tuition?
Well, I mean, I think tuition is, I think tuition is, is a good term of art that captures what we're trying to say.
Right, yeah. But it is the announced tuition?
Yeah, see, that's where people.
Or is it the?
I mean, I, I would give wiggle room on this particular thing as far as what they mean by tuition.
Well, because what David is saying is the, the base education amount, so, which is the amount that that school district is getting reimbursed. That would be the amount that we agreed upon with that district.
Generally going to get reimbursed more than the base education rate. They're going to get that scaled up by their ratio to per pupil spending.
But it's basically, you get to count that child in their, in the ADM, your ADM, so we're going to give you that amount because they're going to your school. I just think to, if, to capture what David's saying, I don't think you want to use the word tuition.
Tuition.
Because tuition implies our announced tuition, which the islands people pay.
So can I, can I instead, can I, can I instead take a whole different tact as far as saying that the receiving school will count that student as one, as an ADM, as opposed, you know, a sending student, I mean, sending school does not? Something along those lines? Should I make it in terms of ADM instead?
You could, and then that may, I, I was just trying to keep it more simplified around resources as a way of, I've been addressing it because.
Can you just say the resource of the student?
With ADM, which Martin's really right, that it's complicated though, because there's still residents of the, of that community, and they're counted in, in that pool, you know, people are less likely.
But the only resource you're talking about here is dollars, right?
That's right. Financial resource, right. And again, I was just, if you're, if we're all representing nine different locations, and we're all trying to plan for budgets around who's going to come or go, it's really hard when yours is fifteen and yours is ten. And all, everyone chooses to go there.
I'm being a bit of the devil's advocate here. I admit that. Why wouldn't I, if I were at a school nearby here, start saying, why don't I encourage my students to go to this place at this lower rate? So that I get more money to pay the people that are left. Why wouldn't I do that?
Students don't, students aren't engaged in this, and that's what we know. It's, and even some of the sending families. But this is why there's great upward pressure to, even with our islands, who, we announce tuition revenue.
I understand it, but it costs money to do this, and it's got to come from someplace, and I don't like lost leaders.
Right. But remember, what we have right now is under one twenty-nine, we have lost leaders.
Oh, for sure. I agree.
So if we had, if we haven't had base education amount coming along with now ten other kids that would have come here as a result, that would have, that would have been different. So again, I'm not saying base ed, I'm saying some amount, some established amount, some established tuition amount.
Can I say amend Act one twenty-nine such that resources follow a school choice student to the receiving district?
Yes, perfect.
Do I, do I there also need the thereby linking student learning with the delivery system?
Great, ma'am.
How's that work?
Okay, just a quick one on page seven. I just thought we could capture on the third proposal, bullet point. Capture Dan's comments from Monday of continued to provide incentives for inter and intra-district consolidation and collaboration.
I thought I had captured it, but I didn't. Okay.
But you did elsewhere, but not in the proposal.
Okay.
And I put on page nine, you say misuse of the education fund. I, I didn't know if, I, I made just a comment of misuse and erosion of the education fund. I don't know if that's more accurate.
It's more colorful.
It is. And the last one I had on page eleven, on the last in first out RIF model. I thought, the point is that wasn't to stand alone and sort of challenge the model. It was really to, I just didn't write words and I can't even read my writing here, but it was to really link the skills and teaching proficiencies associated with graduation requirements. But it, that can be wordsmith, but the point is to have the opportunity to link.
Skills and proficiency what?
Skills and proficiencies with graduation requirements.
Okay.
There's probably some better language there, but those were just my quick comments.
Okay. So I know that we had one major outstanding issue, maybe there's others. The major one being on page five, with respect to the two proposals there. I, I modified somewhat the proposal that no pay increases should occur without agreement. In other words, teachers should remain on step after a contract expires until a new agreement is finalized. It's slightly different language that, for some reason, I feel more comfortable with. Because that was an issue that I maybe had a problem with. And the other one was with respect to impasse. And I know it's a little odd as far as saying one year, that you could end in the middle of a fiscal year, possibly. But it still gives the board a little bit more to have at the, at the bargaining table. And, and, you know, and I was thinking, I mean, I get, there's some different kinds of incentives that are out there. And, and I will make an argument for why having a, something like this, or a longer period of time, makes some sense as far as incentives for school boards. And if a school board is, wants to, really wants to establish, like, no automatic step, that's something that, that we imposed on four years, four and a half years ago. If you really wanted to make that point, you would want to do that at the beginning of the next contract term, presumably. Or if you had, you know, really a serious, you know, money issue, you, you'd want to have the full year of, of the imposition. And that might encourage school boards, in fact, to rush into the imposition decision before the school year begins. Because if they wait and, and till six months in, and they're at the point of imposition, then they're only imposing for six months, and they may not want to do that, or, you know, so I mean, it may give the incentive to actually, to have school boards impose earlier than they might otherwise do. And that, and so I think I would like to see a school board actually have some meat on, on their threat, which is essentially what an imposition is in some respects. It's the equivalent to some respect as, as a strike. But, but it should have some teeth. So, you know, that's, I'm, I'm trying to find a compromise, I don't know if I'm there yet, with Diane or Julie, but.
I just, I think anything that, that sort of erodes, potentially erodes morale in a school district by imposing working conditions, I'm just not in favor of. I, I, you know, the, I guess that's where I stand. You know, it's, right now, it's the one year. I'm not sure that that needs to. I mean, you've worded it differently, but I, I feel like you're saying the same thing. You have impasse and that, that current contract year can be imposed plus an additional year? And it just concerns me.
Right. That's not how, you know, that's not what this is supposed to mean.
But that's what this, I mean, that language, that, it's confusing to me. It feels to me like you're really saying the same thing you said the other day, only different.
I don't think that.
But it's, it's not multi-year. I mean, it's time limited. It's the current year plus one.
No, no, it's one year from whenever you impose. If you impose now, the contract.
It would stay in place till September of the following year.
Right, right.
It's a year, but it adjusts for.
It could stay in place there long. You could lift it if there was an agreement in the contract in the interim.
Right. I mean, it also gives you enough time. Part of it is, if, and you know, I don't ever want to be in a position to impose. I already said last time that I voted against imposition last time it came up. But the point is, I mean, so it's not about that. I mean, I'm, I don't like the concept of imposition. But if there is going to be imposition, it should be a tool that works. Number one, it should be a tool that works at the bargaining table, so that it's not stretched out so that imposition becomes less likely. You know, so in other words, putting teeth into it, you know, at the bargaining table, hopefully never having to get there. And the second is that if you impose terms and it's only for two months, that's really not giving you that much time trying to work things out. I mean, if you impose for a term that you can continue to try to negotiate for the next period of time, it's, it's also a slightly, I think, better situation.
Well, you also said, Martin, a few minutes ago, that this could result in boards imposing earlier.
No, that's what he's trying to avoid.
I think that, no, I'm trying to avoid that, because if, if a board is faced with, if they, if they really see that it's heading towards imposition, they, they may rush to that judgment to get that whole contract year, you know, the terms for that whole contract year.
Do you think that that really happens? That boards rush to impose so they can get one whole year of imposition? Because I, I don't, I don't think that, I mean, I don't have any evidence of that, but I suspect that boards are rushing to impose contract conditions so they can get a full year up, get their full year. I guess I.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know enough about what the different boards have done. I, I guess I could have asked the Winuski folks, because they've imposed two years in a row, not, not recently, but in the last few years.
I guess I just, I feel like I don't know enough to really know what the secondary consequences of something like this would be. And I don't, I just don't have a, I, I can't support it at this point. And this is a really rich document with a lot of ideas and proposals and information. And is this absolutely necessary to be part of this? I mean, does it have, does it?
I mean, there's not, not any, not any component of this has to be.
And I guess I would just ask the board how important it is that this, it is part of it.
Well, my feeling is I didn't convince you, I want it to be consensus, and it's fine. I just gave you my best lawyerly argument I could.
Yeah, and now, and, yeah, from my perspective, first of all, I'm having an out-of-body experience listening to Martin advocate for imposition.
See, like I said, that's why I said I'm lawyerly, you know, whether I believe anything I just said, I don't know, but.
I, I, I look at, first of all, I think it was a really, it is a really good compromise that I do think addresses an outstanding issue. And I think it, 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 it addresses an issue of timing which disadvantages boards under current state statute with imposition. So I, I look at it and say, I, I would support it, and it's not, it's not with the idea that this, you know, is a linchpin to this document. But to me, it's two specific examples in this particular part of the proposal that offer our legislators some insight as to where boards feel like they are disadvantaged and may have some, some area to move. And one is where you're, you know, spending budget in advance of having an agreement and having an understanding of what the final public tax impact will be. And the other is a timing issue. Again, with the hope and intent that it doesn't become routine or, or the part of any process. But I think in combination, it's giving some visibility to legislators as to where we think there's some opportunities to improve the process. So I, I thought it was very, a good, good compromise.
Well, and, and I, I say a couple of things to this. One is that at, at least in South Burlington so far, we've figured out the timing issue by the way we have the contracts set up. And we have, if we've had to, we've been in a position to impose at the beginning of the school year, the last two years. And we've just haven't had to and have decided we didn't have to go there. So, so we, you know, we've been able to get around the timing issue ourselves. I, I guess the other thing is, I, I'd like this to be presented as a consensus board view. There's absolutely no reason as an individual board member that any one of us can also bend the ear of the legislators and say, hey, this is another idea. We didn't have consensus on the board, but here's another idea for, for how to deal with the skewed bargaining table. So I would be inclined to remove that one proposal out of, out of this, so it, you know, so we all can rally around this.
So I, I guess I would like to hear from the board. Would the board's preference be to reach consensus on this, or to vote with a majority, vote on an item, on this particular item, if there are others that may come up?
Well, I mean, from my viewpoint, it's, that's a question of, is this, is this the only issue keeping us from a consensus? Or not?
I mean, that's how I measured it as far as on Monday. This was the only, I mean, the other one was the one that I conceded on, which was, which was the, the automatic step increase issue.
Because I think every one of us individually would have written it somewhat differently.
Right.
So, but it, my view of it is, is I, I think it's an appropriate proposal, but if it's the difference between us having a consensus and having to go to a majority, I'd rather that we deleted it and went with the consensus.
Julie?
I, you know, I, I see your point, Diane, about, and I, and I agreed with you last week. I, I didn't like the multi-year message, but I'm actually okay with this, with this language. And I, I think it's pretty important. I wish we could reach consensus.
So do you think that the board should vote on it? I think that's a good question.
I'd rather we reached consensus, but I think we could vote on it.
So how many people think we should vote on it?
I'm going to take a vote.
We can take a vote. We could move to do this, but, but I think it's more important to, to, to reach consensus on this. And, and I think that, like, because there's another opportunity that any one of us can, can say, in addition to this, there's this other issue out there. I think we have enough strong, we haven't emphasized enough the, our proposed changes to the fact-finding process. Which, the more I've thought about it, that is really, I think, the strongest part of this. Because, because that not only, you know, not only, the guidelines don't just guide the fact-finder, but they guide the positioning of the parties in negotiation. And if the parties understand when you get to fact-finder that the primary issue is going to be the affordability and, and the ability and the willingness to pay, then that shifts, I think, what's led up to the fact-finding. I think that, more than anything, is, is important. So I'm, I, but I think consensus is where we want to be in this document, so.
I'm getting the read that consensus is there, so I think we will strike proposal number two here.
And I don't know if I need to change the language at all in the, that paragraph above, but I don't think so.
Yeah, you should make sure it's consistent.
Are there any other areas up for discussion?
I assume everybody was okay with the one, Act one twenty-nine, and then also the other major language I added was with respect to the, the social services, which is on page ten. the social services, which is on page 10. Those are just the two more substantive things I added.
So, Madam Chair, how do, what do we have to do to accept this? Do we need a motion to do that?
I think we just consensus.
I don't think we need a motion, I think by consensus, I think, from there.
So, do you want me to?
With, with the modifications that we just discussed.
And I just want to add, Martin, that I like that you added the piece about the total cost of education for a student. You know, it's not just the academic piece, so thank you for putting that in there. Go all the other services that come together that contribute to the education of the student.
So, our goal will be, we'll cover this with the city on the 15th, legislators on the 17th. And I think we should maybe talk about other communication vehicles.
City has an open, you know, the, one, one or more, and you could go to that on the 15th, and then 17th is our breakfast.
Okay. So, those are the two planned areas right now.
And do we know who is able to go to the city? I know that I can't, I, I think I can go to the 17th with the legislators, but the 15th have a conflict.
I'm planning on the city, and Martin, have you got the city?
Yeah, I think I, that's the 15th or 17th.
I mean, if we can have as many board representatives as possible.
I, I can make it to that meeting.
I have a conflict.
I think. And it's after the other one?
After our other one.
And it's at seven o'clock, right?
I don't know exactly when it will be on the agenda, but I don't think it's really.
If we can ask to get it on early, that would be great.
Kevin knows about it, he brought it up, and he said they have to send this.
Okay.
And I can make it to legislative breakfast, and.
Perfect.
That's going to be at the city.
City Hall.
City Hall.
Conference room, official conference room.
Yep.
So, so I'll do these edits, and, and I'll give it to Meg or DeWine to put it on letterhead, to then distribute to the, to everybody, legislators, to the city council, anybody else? Send it to V S B A.
County senators, as well as the.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
County senators, as well as the four.
Right.
House reps.
Yeah, thank you, Martin, and thanks, this was great work, I think on behalf of everybody. All right, setting the agenda for the December 17th meeting?
So, we have the Harry Frank, it's on there, it's seven, it's under seven, policy governance. We can be a little bit more specific probably with the SBA partnership. We can take 2.2 off, dealt with that one. 2.5 is on there, and 2.8 was added, so. John, what's your thought on 2.8? What's, you want to, you want to move that and keep 2.5?
Well, 2.5 is, yeah, I mean, 2.8'd be pretty hard to do a good job on and get it on time to.
Okay, so, let's, let's move 2.8 to the, we'll move 2.8 to the next meeting, and I'm going to, at the next meeting, we'll talk a little bit, because we're with policy governance, we'll talk about our calendar, we'll talk about administrative reports, and we'll talk about some of those other agenda items, issues around where those might best reside. I talked a little bit with Elizabeth about it earlier, and we'll, we'll talk more about it then.
2.2's coming off?
2.2's off, because you acted on that tonight, and we're taking 2.8 off, and that will move to the next meeting.
2.8's, just, 2.8's just a move, though, right?
Correct.
I still think, I'm just going to put it out there, I still think we need to have a conversation about going through these, these things. You know, we said we would six months in, and we're just about there, line by line, in these meetings, because, I don't know about you guys, but after 10 o'clock.
Well, what I, what I think, let's add, I mean, that will be part of our conversation when we talk about policy governance, process procedures, end metrics, and we'll talk about our calendar, administrative reports, and maybe how we can keep on schedule a little bit better.
All right, anything else for the December 17th meeting? All right, future agenda items? I know I wrote one down from Monday, but performance evaluation audit update, does that need to become an agenda item, or is that covered elsewhere?
Well, let's just write it down, so we don't lose it. It's embedded in, in one of the, one of the things, but let's, we should have that in discussion.
How about the healthcare from Elizabeth's session?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to put future agenda items on?
Do you want to try to put that on the monitor or somewhere?
You should just send us the minutes.
Uh, I can do that, actually. You can put it down somewhere.
Yeah. Healthcare.
All right, unless there are any other additions to that, consider the minutes of the meeting of November 19th. Any changes?
On page five, once again, it looks like I announced the general consensus of the board to approve the minutes of the conference. It should be Ms. Fitzgerald. That's on the page five, the top.
We've become interchangeable.
You've been trying to take the spotlight for a long time.
I've been trying my best, no, no, I have not, absolutely have not, that's why I want to make sure.
All right, with that changed, the minutes of November 19th are approved. Any additional questions on AP orders 21, 21A, and turning points 86? All right.
Yep.
Good.
All right, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.
Take a second, all in favor? We are adjourned.